One of the things we'd like to do before we get into items one through four tonight is talk a little bit about the flood and the prospects there. I know everybody's been watching that pretty closely, so we'll ask Ron to go ahead and just give us an update on our three items of interest.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Commissioners and folks that are here and watching from home. From a staff perspective, we thought it might be good to update folks on a few of the flood-related and flood repairness issues. As you know, we've had a lot of rain this spring. Last week, we had some heavy rains that caused some flooding along Wildcat Creek. Fortunately, we didn't have any that got into structures, but we were closing roads and certainly raised a lot of concern relative to the Labor Day floods we had that were catastrophic last fall and certainly record-setting. So, we just want really to focus on awareness and for folks just to be more engaged. The other event that happened with last week's rains was that the Kansas River came up substantially and we closed our floodgates on the levee system. So, that keeps the river water out of the city from backing up into our storm drainage system, but it also makes us vulnerable to whatever rain falls. So, we have to pump that water through the levee system. And if you get big torrential rains, that can cause flooding in the bathtub effect, if you will. And that certainly would impact along Tuttle Creek Boulevard and that particular area down by Walmart and the ditch there, which is actually the old original Blue River. That's what that ditch was where it went into the Kansas before Tuttle Creek Lake was even constructed. But, the lake levels are the third highest that they've ever been right now. And that's kind of a marker that's to take note of this early in the season that we have. And so, it's something we certainly want to bring to folks' attention. We're presently at 1123, a little more than that, which is 13 feet below the top of the spillway gates. And so, if it were to get to that level, the gates will come open and run on kind of an automatic system based on the water that's running into the system. So, really what we'd like to do, we've started to do, is focusing more on flood awareness and folks being prepared for what might come. You know, don't necessarily want to say that it's going to be as bad as '93. It could be worse than '93. It just kind of depends on the circumstantial situations. And so, one of the things, as I looked, we've got a wealth of information on our website, and there's going to be popping up on the screen some information throughout this briefing where folks can go with that. The Corps of Engineers on their website has a record of the last basically eight days of elevations, and it shows you that comparison. And then, they also have kind of a three-day forecast for what they envision happening. And so, that's information from there. But, just since last Tuesday, the lake's gone up over six feet. And so, that kind of gives you some feeling for what can happen when we had, you know, certainly we had two to three inches of rain in the watershed, and that watershed that influences Tuttle Creek is pretty sizable. And just so the things that we start watching is what are the inflows into the lake. And so, actually today's the lowest inflow amount that we have at 3,800 cubic feet per second, but on Thursday, they were 51,000 cubic feet per second. So, if the lake gets up to the top of those gates, that's what they have to open it and release, is that 51,000 that's coming in. And so, that can be pretty destructive. It was up over 60,000 CFS released in the '93 flood. So, those are just some gauges that we're watching. The Corps of Engineers is the one that manages the lake, and certainly they've got a big job on their hands, and they're managing the whole system. But, our Kansas City office manages our area, and then the St. Louis office manages the whole Missouri River system that flows into the Mississippi. And if you've been looking at any of those areas on different sites, both the Missouri and the Mississippi have been in flood warnings since March, you know. And so, the elevations aren't coming down. One of the things that I noted off of a corps report is that the near-record April runoff has been extensive in the upper parts of the Missouri Basin. The March and April runoff in the upper basins consisted of about 18.7 million acre-feet, and I'm not going to get into what that means, but that's a lot of water. And so, yeah, we only have 2 million acre-feet in Tuttle as a comparison. So, it's the highest March-April runoff since record-keeping began in 1898 and exceeded the previous record of 15.9 million in 1952. So, that's what that means is that the lakes in the system are going to be letting water out a lot. And so, the rivers are going to be running full. And so, the ability to let water out of the system is going to be limited. And we've, right now, Tuttle's been kind of a lone, I'd say a week ago, the Tuttle was really the only one that's been storing a lot of water other than Perry. And now, we're seeing a lot of lakes after this last rain event that's starting to store a lot more water. So, all of those lakes that flow into the Kansas, that flow into the Missouri, that flow into the Mississippi are going to be regulated by how much they can release because they're all sharing the ability to release into that watershed. And so, I think the four-day projection has us maybe being able to go up to 2,000 for a release, which is the highest release we had in the last seven days. Most of the releases have been about 200. So, not a lot of ability to get rid of some of the water we have. And so, that really is one of the things that we're focused on. We've done a lot of modeling of different situations, and it's a lot of variables at play with this depending on how high the elevations are on the Kansas River, influence what the elevations are going to be from the releases from Tuttle Creek Reservoir. So, both the city and Riley County and Potawatomi Counties have been meeting and preparing for different aspects of things. When the lake gets up to 10 feet below, so an elevation of 1126, then there'll be, the emergency operations center opens, there'll be daily meetings of different aspects of the lake operations. One of the things that we're going to start doing is next week, we'll do, next couple of weeks, we'll be doing some more meetings primarily in the Northview area. As we get more information, we'll do targeted areas for notification with door knockers and other kinds of issues. You know, one of the things that's kind of taken off in popularity is our Monday morning Facebook, Facebook Live programs that we've had. We did one this past Monday on, I guess that was just yesterday, wasn't it? On the flooding event, and it's already had over 8,000 views. So, they do, staff have done a good job of trying to identify some of the different aspects and things that people need to start thinking about. But, a lot of it is, you know, and we don't want to, certainly not want to panic people, but people need to think about things that they want to get a kit together for when, if they are asked to evacuate because in all likelihood, they'll be gone for quite a while. Is there a place they can go and stay with friends or family in the area? And are there valuable things that they want to save? And do they have flood insurance? Even though there may not be required to get flood insurance, there's a lot of areas that flooded in '93 that were out of the floodplain. So, there's a lot of information on our website that we'll provide and help folks in regard to that. And certainly, if we get into an evacuation mode, we'll be setting up shelters. But certainly, there are some targeted areas that we know from history will flood first. And that's, you know, that area in the Dix edition and also in the Berry additions and along that line. That's where the water backs up or flows. And so, we'll be contacting some of those folks just to give them more information so they can be as prepared as they can be in the event. And hopefully, the sun will stay shining and we won't get rain, and Tuttle will continue to absorb a lot of impacts that it's done so well over the past few years. We also have other internal threats. So, the city's website, www.cityofmhk.com backslash forward slash flood is the website, and there's a lot of information there. And we'll continue to keep folks informed as best we can. And if you have questions, just give us a call here at the city. We'll be happy to try and answer. Thank you.
All right. I think, Vicki, are you going to present? Okay. So, item number one, Food and Farm Council update, and Vicki will be the presenter. Bring as many folks as you want. I see.
Bring the whole gang.
Yeah.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, those in the community that are present or listening or watching. Thank you for the opportunity. My name is Vicki James, and I've met most of you before. I have the privilege of serving as the coordinator for the local Food and Farm Council. And I have to tell you that this flood thing is a little bit frightening to me. My husband and I are transplants from western Kansas, so you can imagine, this is new territory for us. We love living here in our beloved Manhattan, so I appreciate the information that you shared. Thank you very much. I want to begin just with a brief history of why we're here today. So, how did we get to that point? Because many really may not know. I know you do, but may, some may not. One of the key steps in understanding a community's food system, their current strengths and their gaps, is to conduct a comprehensive assessment of the food system. In 2017, the Flint Hills Wellness Coalition commissioned a Riley County and a regional food system assessment. And that brought together data. A lot of it was secondary data, but it brought us a lot of data points to create a description of our current food system in this region. Now, the goal was then to identify what strengths and what gaps are in our food system, and to use that information, not just that day, but for many years to come, as a baseline measurement for moving forward. So, this assessment was done by a woman named Barb Leclair. Barb is a well-known data analyst at the time, who was part of the Kansas Health Institute for many, many years in Topeka, and then went into private practice. And she's also the one that did many of the food system assessments across the state of Kansas in many communities, so widely known for doing a great job. Now, we are going to share with you, Jennifer Morris is one of our Riley County members of the Food and Farm Council. She's going to share just a few of those data points. And if you want to know the exact source of each of those, I am glad at any point to send you the 85-page report that we have, but I don't think there's time for us to do that tonight. So, just recognize, this is a handful of points of many that we received to help us formulate where the Food and Farm Council might plug themselves in in the community to be the best service that we can be with our system. So, Jennifer, you want to share just a few, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you, Vicki. Once again, my name is Jennifer Morris, and I am on the Food and Farm Council. So, regarding economic impact, Riley County residents spend approximately $171 million annually on food purchases. Agriculture, food, and food processing sectors employ about 1,400 people in Riley County alone and contribute more than $159 million to the county economy. Regarding health, 23% of Riley County adults eat less than one time per day, and, excuse me, eat one serving of vegetable, less than one vegetable per day. And more than 40% eat fruit less than once per day. 22% of Riley County adults are obese, and another 33% classified as overweight. Regarding hunger, more than one in six, or approximately 18.5% of Riley County households have difficulty affording food. The rate's higher than the statewide rate of 14.2%. 40% of K-State students who report financial hardship indicate difficulty affording food. Regarding access, about 30,000 people, or 42.3% of the county population, live in a food desert. Food deserts are defined as lower-income areas where people must travel at least one mile in an urban area or 10 miles in a rural area to get to their nearest supermarket or grocery store. Household waste is 21 million pounds annually with a value of more than 27 million. And from 2003 to 2012, food waste increased from 13% to 17% in Kansas.
Thank you, Jennifer. Now, I want to be sure that I'm really clear that these are nine data points that we've shared. None of these are standalone. None of these, standing alone, would make good quality decisions in moving forward with a quality food system. Each requires being put in context with other data, working alongside partners that are already working in these arenas, to try to figure out the gaps and the needs and the next step for viable, long-lasting, sustainable solutions. So, I would ask that each of us not try to focus on an individual data point. And also, that tonight, we want to share with you updates, and these are just reminders. So, this is not due data, but things that were shared from the 2017 assessment that was done. One that has came up, though, so I want to give you an example of why I'm saying this. The council, nor I, made up the term "food desert." That's a very common term that's been used for many years across the country and beyond. That definition that you heard, a one-mile urban access to a full system grocery store, so it would be not a corner store, not something like that, but where you'd have full service, or 10 miles rural, that's used for many different reasons. So, again, that's an isolated data point, and we'd have to sit down with all the other factors that go into why people have less than high-quality diets to figure out why that point may or may not be important. So, they've tried to say, well, is there a direct correlation between obesity and being overweight, diet and access? And we don't have a direct correlation. It's one factor. So, the same way with access. It's not to say that we want to put a grocery store one mile from everyone. That's not the point at all. But, we do know the reason they use that one-mile point is because someone that's healthy can't hardly carry a sack full of groceries or two or three more than that distance. So, I'd ask you to consider, what if someone had some limitations with walking? What if they had some health issues? Or what if they had one or two little ones tagging along behind? So, that's why our council so appreciates partnerships such as the Atabas system and how that has really increased the access points for people to be able to get to healthy foods. And so, we want to continue to work and look with partners like that of how we might do other things. How might we bring foods that are healthy and affordable and safe and local to our neighborhoods? So, there are a lot of different things. That's just one isolated point. And remember, that's tracks that are low-income and low-access together. So, if you're looking at a track that's a mile from a grocery store, but it's not low-income, then that wouldn't fall in our scope of work. We would just be working with those that have that access situation. So, that's just an example. What they define as family income for that is less than 200% of the federal poverty level. So, there are definitely definitions that we use with this. So, we have all this data, showed you the 85 pager. What are we going to do with all that? Well, if you'll remember, the first thing we did with all of that data was put together a 20-member community task force. And that group spent almost a year, meeting regularly and very diligently, building a framework. If we had a Food and Farm Council, what might that look like here? And so, we had members of the city and county commissioners and staff involved in that. Chad was involved in that, and also Karen McCullough was involved. Ben Wilson was involved, Monty Whedles. We had multiple people representing Sidney County involved with that. Now, what came of that? We spent a lot of time educating the community and the city and county commissioners, and you all did such a wonderful forward-thinking and collaborative job because last August in 2018, we were privileged enough to have you sign a joint resolution to create the 15-member advisory council. And as you will recall, the city has so many appointments and the county has so many appointments, but they work together as one advisory council to serve you both. And just for clarification also, I am not one of the appointed members. My role is to serve to coordinate their efforts. As Jennifer said, I herd them. I try to herd them all together and get them going in one direction. Now, this was a really large step for the community, one that's not been done before, to put together a Food and Farm Council that was publicly appointed, as you all did. So, we have to remember, this is a little bit bigger than just eating fruits and vegetables. Now, she did point out that we're not doing so hot with that one. That's a data point that is a concern across the country, not eating our fresh fruits and vegetables, and the detriment that that has with health. But, we have to remember, the food system is all the processes and the infrastructure that's involved in feeding a population. So, that starts and goes through the whole summary of activities available. That's growing and food production, harvesting, processing, packaging, distribution, marketing and retail, consumption, and ending with disposal of food waste. So, a healthy and robust community food system helps support and sustain a healthy community. So, we have to remember that this is also a lot of significant economic activity. And you notice that was one of the first data points we pointed out. There's a lot of dollars involved when we're talking about production to the point of retail and all throughout the food system. So, it can be a very, very positive thing. The challenge is, though, so why a food council? Well, who's responsible for all these things, these things that we've talked about so far? There really isn't one body. The food system is very complex. Therefore, the food challenges are also super-complex. There's no Department of Food that oversees all the aspects of the food system. So, creating sustainable, long-lasting solutions to improve our system gets a lot better if there is someone that is committed to that. And it's been a movement to the point of becoming a norm in the last few years across not only the state of Kansas, but the country, that a local Food and Farm Council is a strategic way to bring together diverse community stakeholders to look at the food system and work together to strengthen it. So, we're not here to tell anyone that their work isn't good or they're not doing the right thing. We're here to have our work be as an advocate for and to support, excuse me, access to local, healthy, safe and affordable food, and bring people together to try to improve where we are now. So, what have we accomplished in the last nine months? Because it hasn't even been a year yet. Well, one of the things that we're really pleased about is we've helped support the Solid Waste Management Plan. So, for the first time, there is food waste language that's in the plan. And also, we were invited to have two council members be appointed to that committee. So, we have two people serving on that currently. Part of that will be a consumer educational process that we will work through to help people with purchasing only what they can possibly really use without wasting it, or, you know, those sorts of purchasing and disposing of things. So, we will be working with extension on that. The second thing that we've done that we think is really important is designed a multi-phase community engagement plan. And that first part, that phase one, is where we are right now. So, our council members have divided up, and we are doing interviews with 75 key partners. These are people that are everything from businesses and retail that are working with food, caterers, restaurants, but also people working in the health industry. So, it's extension and health, people working with senior citizens, people working with at-risk populations. We're working with Fort Riley, the hospital, civic organizations, et cetera, et cetera. And we have a handful of questions. We're asking these people, where are they now with their work in the food system? What's working? What's not? Who would they like to collaborate and work with? Or would they like us to just leave them alone and they're all good? We're probably halfway through all of those interviews, and I can tell you, no one has walked away. We have been overwhelming, overwhelmed with the response that this is the first time anyone's brought us together, and they're excited about it. So, again, it's just us saying, how can we collaborate? How can we really help reduce duplication of services? How can we reduce the need for resources and share together? How can we have our shared interests and collaborate to make a healthier community? So, that's a pretty big task, if you can imagine, doing community partner interviews with at least 75 groups. And it doesn't have to end there. If anybody calls us and says, hey, come interview our group, you left us out, we'll be on their doorstep. Now, where do we go from there? What we'll do with those partners is invite them to community forums. That will be very specific to topic. So, if folks are working on food insecurity and hunger, if others really want to work on food recovery, how we might take some of those leftovers that are still very viable and safe and get them in a safe manner to those that need it, we might have a forum on that. Other people, if they want to work on how we can help support our local producers, there may be a forum with that. So, stay tuned for those. You will certainly be invited. Another thing that we're very pleased to tell you is we have been hunting grant funds, and we have been able to secure some. They're not large in number, but we have secured 30,000. We have 25 more that is pending, and a 10,000 that's out there. That application is running around, and we'll see how that goes. Another one that we plan to write this summer. We do that in respect for the city and county budgets. We know, and we heard very loud and clear, that it would be a challenge for you to support us when you made the resolution if we came and we needed a budget. So, we just want you to know that we're doing our best to not have to do that and to be able to do good work. So, we may be limited a little bit because of the dollars, but it hasn't stopped us. And so, we think we've accomplished some good things already without having significant large dollars. We know you have a lot on your plate with tax issues and other great initiatives going on, and we don't want to add to that if we don't have to. We also participated in, the Commissioners know this because of the information we sent forward a month or two ago, there was a push across the state to advocate with our state legislator to either lower or totally eliminate state sales tax on groceries. And not city and county, and we let you know, we weren't trying to dabble in that area, but state sales tax. Now, there were a couple of bills in Senate, another in House committees, didn't really get to the point of, of course, having one that we will be able to use next year, but it's certainly in the works. And so, if you know about that, most of the states in our, do not have a lot of state sales tax, certainly not as high as we do in Kansas, and some of our bordering states have none. So, it would be really, really helpful to those that are limited in income, and we hope that that's something that we can continue to advocate for. So, we have been working on those sorts of things. We're mentoring 2K State MPH students, interns, this summer. Again, that's a win-win. They help us when we don't have a lot of dollars, and we hope that we give them a good experience. So, they're going to help us enter all that data from those 75 interviews. They're going to help us with the educational process. One young lady I want to share with you is from Afghanistan. She is observing what we're doing because she would like to do something similar and take the template back to her country. That's certainly going to be much more difficult than the challenges we have here, but we admire that. She's a Fulbright scholar, and she's a delight. So, we are enjoying already these two students. It's not even, you know, they're in the middle of finals, and they've already started working for us, unpaid internships. Another exciting thing is that we've really engaged many key stakeholders. We have visitors that come to our meetings. As you know, they're public meetings. Everyone receives, you can look at the agenda and the minutes, the city and county websites. And anyone that's interested, we put them on a little email listserv, and they receive invites that way, too. So, people like Boys and Girls Club, Job Corps, the hospital, Common Table, many people doing great work in this community are either regular attendees, or we email with them and work back and forth. So, that's exciting, too. One that I didn't want to put on here, but the council insisted when we put this together, is because of this work, I've been recognized twice in the last month with awards. And I only accept those for the past, incurred, and present work that the council's doing. The St. Louis School of Leadership Studies has each year a Community Champion Award, and I was privileged enough to go to an award ceremony two weeks ago alongside some great students that received awards, and Pat Mosko, who, my goodness, deserves so much credit. So, that was a wonderful award. The College of Human Ecology has an Alumni Advocacy Award, and I will be receiving that in October. So, I only share that because that has to do with the leadership that this council is attempting to undertake. What kind of things have we learned so far with those interviews and with focus groups that we've done? Last week, we did two focus groups with international students, and Ariana, our MPH student from Afghanistan, led those because she understands the limitations and the gaps. Well, we've learned by talking to families that attend the summer meal programs at the schools, most of them don't even know about Common Table. They have no idea that that service exists. Common Table reports to us that most K-State students don't use their services and not sure why. We already are hearing from people that they love the additions to the bus system, but there are a few more stops that would be really great, that would really help folks. And so, it's great to be able to work with those people as partners. We're hearing that people would really like to have neighborhood gardens and would love extension. And Greg Istone is one of our council members, and he's all about, get me out there, Vicki. I'm ready to help. out there, Vicki, I'm ready to help them get those garden plots going. We're hearing that some households don't have the small kitchen and cooking equipment they need, maybe down to the point of pots and pans and can openers. We actually have an initiative that we hope to be announcing soon, a way for people to donate things that they have and we will be able to have distribution points to share those with people that need them. So stay tuned for that that's coming. So we've been working hard on that. We also know from our interviews that food recovery from restaurants and caterers is not really being done at a very coordinated level here. It is being done some, but it's minimally. So if you think about waste going to the landfill, we know that that's a big, big initiative that can be taken on. It's going to take a long time to do it, but we do have local restaurants and chains as well and caterers who are interested in working with us. And again, we're not going to tell them how to do that, but we do have skill and expert people that have backgrounds in food safety and how they could manage this process. It's been done in Washington DC quite successfully. So if it could be done in a place that large, I think we can make an inroad here in Manhattan, Kansas. So what's our next year look like? We've been pretty busy. Well, we want to complete that community engagement plan by getting all those interviews, looking at that data and putting our forums together. At that point, we want to get people into small groups and start them working on initiatives through a strategic work plan, which will be public and made to everyone. We want to continue to educate and advise decision-makers and policymakers as well as the general public about our food system because all of this is all of us coming together for healthier food choices. Last, I would say to commissioners and Mayor Dodson, how can you help us? If it's not with a budget, if that's not in the cards immediately or in the near future at all, there are four things we came up with. We would encourage that the council be seen as a resource and an advisor to both the city and the county commissions in efforts to improve access to local, healthy, safe and affordable food. Use us, use our expertise, ask us questions, ask us to find things, work with us as best that you can when you have those situations that would be right for that. Please encourage civic engagement in partnering with our council on food system issues. If you're playing golf or having coffee and somebody says, what about that council? You go, yeah, call them. It doesn't have to be me, it can be any of our council members. And those are all very public and, but you're welcome to have people call me if you want to do that too. But encourage people to get involved. The third thing is if you know of any grant dollars that are coming through the state or feds, let us know. Just roll those over to us because there are some dollars that from time to time you may see out there that we may not. And those may come, I know there are some from time to time that are for food systems. And some of those are cities, some are county, some are regional, some are state and some are feds. So let us know if you see something because it may come to you and it may not be something we see. And the fourth thing is when we are writing grants, if we need letters of support, it would go a long way if both of our commissions wrote letters of support. That would just be the cherry on the top. So we would ask that. So we thank you so much again. It's a privilege to get to work with this group. Most of these people have not worked together, don't really know each other, and we're having a great time figuring out how to improve the food system in Riley County and the city of Manhattan together. So thank you so much.
Comment?
I was just curious, how do you get in touch with you? Are you at the Health Department or are you really know one place?
That's right.
That's right.
Yes, yes Commissioner Morris, I work from my home. You can readily contact the council through the Food and Farm Council's website page, which is on the Flint Hills Wellness Coalition website. So there is an email address there that can be used, but certainly you can contact me directly.
So I can just Google that and?
Yeah, I can give it to you. In fact, it's fine, I can give you all my email. I'll be getting emails tomorrow by the dozens, right? So it's my first and last name, V I C K I E James, J A M E S eight nine five five at gmail.com. But you certainly can use the Flint Hills Wellness Coalition website, it has an info box and many of those drop in there. People call the Health Department and those get rolled over to me. But at this point, I am a little bit paid and a lot volunteer, so I work from my home.
I happened to visit today with the Director of the Area Agency on Aging. That provides the meals, what's called friendship meals, as a kind of an alternative word for meals on wheels, you know that. And she didn't, hadn't been contacted. So I want to put your organization and her in touch with you or you in touch with them because that's a missing piece, I think, for your interviews.
Jackie?
Okay.
On your list.
Okay, I was going to say, yeah, I was pretty sure that Jackie Mack is our go-to for that. See, I even know who's supposed to be interviewing who.
She said, it's strange, I haven't been contacted.
Yeah, I think we just aren't there yet.
Yeah, okay. So you haven't identified, or you've identified, but you haven't been able to complete interviews and make the contact.
Not with everyone.
All right, thank you.
Our council members are busy, most of them working full-time, some of them, you know, in and out with their work, some of it not just even in-state. And one of our members is going to Greece for some work, so she's going to be a little delayed in some of her interviews, but I'm sure that's on the list. Thank you for bringing it up.
Thank you, yeah.
I have a question regarding the food desert part. Me and Commissioner Morris live in the Northview neighborhood, so that is always an interest to me. But one of the things that I thought has been really effective over the last year was ATA and NPO putting in a lot of work to make sure the routes for the ATA bus helped kind of address some of those issues. So we've identified these food deserts, but has there been any work done to find out if those further access to transportation measures have helped in that aspect at all? Because it's very unlikely that we're building a grocery store in Northview, right? But we still need to make sure that those residents needs are being addressed.
One of our interviews is with someone that actually works with the out-of-bus system. He's the regional director. And actually, he and I were to have our meeting tomorrow and it had to be canceled. So on the list of questions is what has changed from our data point that we had to now in relationship to access? So perfect question that we will be working on.
Thank you, I appreciate that, yeah. Because in a lot of these places, it's probably, again, unlikely that we would build an additional grocery store there, but, so we have to think about it probably from a transportation aspect. So that's something I would definitely be curious to hear more about in the future.
Yeah, we're so excited that they're really willing partners to work with us. You know, there are communities that utilize their bus system in a reverse way. They take local produce into the neighborhoods, not only just transferring people to grocery stores or whatever. So there's so many different ways that those things work, it's an interesting thing. Also, I realize that you are a city commission, but from a county standpoint, because this is city-county, some of those tracks are rural because people live 10 miles or more. And I grew up living where you carried a cooler in the back because you had to drive a really long way to a grocery store. So it does have an impact on what people eat, how much they eat, the kinds of things oftentimes due to time constraints and limitations. And there's so many other social factors and cultural factors and all of that. So access is just one, but I just wanted to clarify that tonight, that we're not saying this food desert thing is a standalone. But when you take low income and low access and you put that together and you overlay that with other factors and then you look at, are there things that we need to look at with our partners to work on? And we will be addressing that in months to come.
Thank you.
Yep.
Yeah, I didn't hear, by the way, you did an excellent job in the presentation. There was lots of material covered for just being there for nine months. Do you have a partnership with the school district with over 6,000 students?
Yes.
In our area? Yeah, I didn't hear that, I heard the county, city, but I wasn't sure if the school district was part of this.
Definitely. Stephanie Smith, the Food Service Director, is one of the appointed 15 council members. And that gives us great access to working directly with the schools through the food system part. We also have involvement because of that inroad with PTAs, PTOs, those that are working with the gardens. Some of the schools have gardens, some that's fallen away because of our partnership with extension and we have extension folks on our council. Some of that is coming back into play. We actually tag teamed with the school district to write a grant. And the idea there is to bring school gardens back to all the elementary schools and also do nutrition education. We don't know yet about that grant, but that's one of the things that was done in collaboration with the school district.
Yeah, one of the things I highly suggest and either with board members or with Stephanie Smith, like you pointed out, or with site council and PTOs, somehow we correlate class parties or anything celebrations, whether you win a book and then you win a candy bar along with it. We always associate feel-good with highly saturated, high-salt, high-sugar foods. And that's true at home, that's true in our media, that's true in schools. So we can have some kind of guidelines for class parties or even those celebrations of some kind and work with our Hy-Vee or other grocery stores or other associations, maybe to work, you know, bringing oranges or apples or something. Because that's an, it's anymore, it's an acquired taste because they don't have it so much at homes. And it's not even about poverty.
Oh, I agree.
The obesity and everything has crossed, it does not discriminate. We are such a fast pacing society anymore. We want fast food constantly and highly processed foods. So if we can have some initiatives where it's easily accessible, so that's the first thing they grab as opposed to a soda. I had first graders bringing sodas to school for lunch or drinking Gatorade for breakfast and things like that. So I don't know how you change that mindset, but it certainly has to change because now that's becoming the cool thing that even parents are sending their students with their children with. So it's a long-term project kind of thing, but those conversations can happen with our site council and PTOs. Because if those aren't ingrained at a fundamental level at youth, those behaviors are hard to change as you get older.
Yes, and that was my world in another life when I led Healthy Kids Challenge, which was a nationally known nonprofit. And that was our work, helping put wellness policies into schools effectively, not just on paper, but effectively. So it, you know, there are those requirements and policies out there, but then really working with administration and parents, teachers, everybody involved, the children obviously themselves, to figure out how to do it so that we want to do that is a whole nother level and a lot of work. But we have those conversations and I hope as we become closer in relationship with each of the schools and what they're trying to accomplish and what we're trying to accomplish, that that's going to improve. But that is a passion for me because that's how I spent many, many years trying to have that kind of impact across the country.
I haven't read your website recently, so this question kind of comes from there. Maybe you already have it, but do you have defined goals and objectives?
Yes, we do. I can pull those out and read them to you if you want me to, but we do. When we put together the bylaws, we put together a mission statement and we put together our goals and objectives. And those goals and objectives may change over time.
The reason I ask that is because while I applaud what you're doing, I mean, we have spent in America, I don't know how many, probably billions of dollars trying to change people's minds about how they consume food. And it doesn't appear to be working. All the trend lines are going the other way.
Right.
So whether it's poor nutrition or bad choices, whatever it is. So you have on the one hand, a education problem, which is, as you said, you're teaching about health, you're teaching about exercise, you're teaching about how you procure food and so on. We have a transportation issue and then we have a distribution issue. The other thing I would recommend to you is that, and you have to, I think, bite this a little at a time. I mean, there's no sense trying to overreach because you're not going to make it. You've got to find those things that you can fix and attack those. That's my recommendation. The other thing is that the concept of a food desert, I think, is counterproductive. People hear that and they laugh. So it doesn't mean that the metric by itself is incorrect. It simply means that in order to be meaningful, for example, I live in a food desert. I'm more than a mile from the grocery store. But if you cross-cut that with demographics that have to do with income or have to do with other factors, then you get at the scope of the problem. And if we're trying to solve a problem, we need to know the size of it and who's involved. So I know you're working on this, but I mean, I think that has to be principle in what you're doing. Because again, this term food desert doesn't ring with most people.
Right. Mayor, if I may, and maybe I didn't state it very clearly, that the definition though is a lower-income area. And so if someone lives, like if I live a mile, more than a mile from a full-service grocery store, but I'm not at that 200% poverty level line of low income, then my track gets tossed out. So it's, it has to have the lower income criteria and that more than a mile urban or ten before it actually is what we would work with, with that definition. So it gets confusing.
Do you know the size of that?
The size of?
The size of that population you're describing?
Yes, it's the, what Jennifer reported.
The 42.3%?
Yeah, and so part of that is because...
About 30,000 people live in that, those areas or 42.3%.
And a lot of that is...
That can't be.
Is rural.
Well, it can't be.
Because of the distance.
It can't be 30,000 people.
But, well, we can...
There's only 70,000 people in the county.
Right.
So my point here is, you've got to define the problem and then you've got to describe those things you're going to do in the near and the midterm to fix it.
Yes.
Otherwise, I mean, this thing is open-ended. And again, we've tried to do this in America for a long time and nobody's been successful. I applaud your efforts, but I just think you have to be as realistic as you possibly can.
And part of this beyond education goes to systems change. And system change, as we know, is difficult too. So whether it's informal policy at a systems level or whether it's formal policy at a government level, making it easier for people to have access and affordable, healthy, safe food, it is a big challenge. So that's the part that a lot of people try to do this just through education and stop there. Though that's why we think it's really important to have the city and county commissioners involved and our institutional organizations and our businesses so that we can try to work from that angle as well. It's a tough uphill battle. And I do have that, if you want the mission statement and goals, I have it right here in front of me. The mission statement that was written by the council. "The purpose of the council is to advocate for and sustain an accessible, healthy and local food system. The Food and Farm Council of Riley County and City of Manhattan, Kansas, envisions a local food system that supports healthy living in our community. To accomplish this, the council must, one, identify and prioritize needs and make recommendations that promote, support and strengthen access to local, healthy food. Two, educate and advise where necessary and important and feasible the city and county commissions and other organizations on local food system needs. Three, provide a forum for people involved in different parts of the local food system and our local government officials for fostering collaborative, coordinated actions to improve our local food system." So those are large. And then we, as we develop our strategic plan and actions, it's broken down where we have that phase one, phase two, phase three of work plan. So it is large. Thank you very much. We will go back to our report, but I feel pretty sure that the data that we have provided is accurate and if there is something that needs to be corrected, we will make sure that that is known to you as well as the county commissioners and the public.
Vicki?
Yes.
Before you exit the podium, I just wanted to say, I think the term, the food desert, The Mercury does an outstanding job on a lot of things, but when they pick their editorial, sometimes that's all we focus on. And there are a lot of metrics to this. And Ogden is a food desert and it doesn't have a grocery store, it doesn't have any kind of even healthcare facilities. So we don't think about small communities like that. When you pair it with a poverty and even generational, even age at some point, some of those do come into factor. So I think because the way it was described in The Mercury, I think there was some false perceptions to it. Because oftentimes, I, when I'm in Ogden, I see those parents, it's a family event to go get groceries, unless you consider the Dollar General a grocery store.
Right.
Yeah, I make one comment, I agree with the mayor...
I agree with, you know, the mayor's assessment, but one of the things I found interesting is, you know, competition in the supermarkets, they deliver. You know, Hy-Vee's got delivery service. That should play into your criterion. And I know some are going to say, "Well, you know, you don't have enough money to buy food, you don't have enough money to pay for the delivery service." I get that, but maybe that should be the goal then. If somebody's out there so far they can't get food and, and they can call Hy-Vee to deliver it, then figure out how to maybe subsidize the delivery portion of it. That'll change your metric remarkably, but I think all the supermarkets are doing that. You can call into Dylan's, they'll pull it from the shelves for you.
Right.
And have it ready to go so you could drive out a bus that's waiting for you, you know, when you get there. So, so I think, I think that needs a, a better look. And I'm skeptical, like the mayor is, 30,000 people, that number just doesn't seem right.
Yep. Well, thank you, Commissioner Butler. The, the fact that the grocery stores now deliver is a relatively new opportunity and so it's certainly on the list of factors to look at, what might that look like? And also helping people to identify with that that is a choice they can make. So that goes back to working with people and helping communicate that. But that's a relatively new opportunity that we have. Yeah, so thank you for bringing it up.
How often will you be reporting to us? Is it quarterly or twice a year? Ron, do you have a plan?
This is a request from the council, so I would put that back on them for how often they think they should report.
Um, when, what we've talked about is probably twice a year unless you have a request of us or we would request because we have something current that we would like to talk with you about or ask you about, but certainly, we, we don't want to take your time if it's, if it's not going to be a good use of your time.
Actually, what I was thinking was more practical. It was, I know that the ATA is going to reorganize bus routes, I think, this summer. I've been hearing that, just a little bit.
Tweak.
Tweak. So your data might change a little bit after they do some tweaking, so, but I want to be sure that, you know, it's going to be a little while before you have new data too if that happens. So I wanted to be sure. Yeah, thank you. This has been, it's been informative for us. We need to know that this and need to think about the low-income people in our community. So thank you.
Well, thank you. We, we know this is a, a big challenge. We're not going to get it solved today or tomorrow and it, it needs everybody involved. So it's the people with the skill sets to help make the changes and it's the people that need those changes working together and as well as our city and county officials. So appreciate it. And we'll come see you anytime you have something that we can help you do. We'd love that opportunity. Otherwise, probably a couple of times a year so we don't overstep.
And are you gonna, you're gonna follow up right with those six census tracks, right?
Yes, I will.
Do you, okay, I was just curious. There, I think, I'm only saying that there's 14 in Riley County. I could be very wrong about that. So six with 30,000 people doesn't sound like way off to me, but I'd still be curious to see which ones those are. Thank you.
Yep, I will follow up on that and get back with you regarding that. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
So item two is Bicycle and Pedestrian System Plan Update. John?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the commission. John Adams, Senior Planner. Thank you for having me. This is really just a reminder of a project that's ongoing and it's related to something that we started last year that had been budgeted a few years before, and that was the creation of a Safe Streets Plan. Last year, while we were getting ready to start that, the Flint Hills NPO approached staff with the idea of creating, of pursuing a grant to do a more expansive project that achieved the Safe Streets objective and then some, a comprehensive bicycle and pedestrian transportation systems plan. We applied for a consolidated planning grant and received over $148,000. With that, we hired Alta Planning and Design, Shaki Consulting and CFS engineers to create the Bike and Ped Plan and a Companion Mobility Manual. The city and the university originally created a Bike Master Plan in 1999. It contained a number of projects ranked into three levels of priority and then also included on-street facilities and off-street improvements such as bike parking. The bike plan has been only partially realized and since 20 years have passed, it seemed like a good time to revisit it and to reignite interest. So the idea for the updated plan is to create a prioritized list of not only bike infrastructure but pedestrian infrastructure projects for the next 20 years. We'll also be adding park and recreations list of pedestrian projects that the sales tax will not cover. The Companion Mobility Manual is really going to be a guidebook for staff to use internally. It'll contain methods for balancing the needs of the different modes on the systems and design solutions for tricky retrofit projects in the core of town and a guide for doing demonstration projects. I should make clear that what this, clear what this plan is for. It's not really the kind of plan for this kind of biking or for recreational trails. It's a plan for this and this and this, everyday transportation needs that people have. We're doing it because these sorts of situations exist. People have destinations they are willing to go, even if there's no easy way to get there or even a safe one. It's about treating walkers and bikers with some respect, building a dignified system of transportation choices for people that's safer and easier for them to use. This planning project also includes a unique public outreach component. We're doing a number of demonstration projects around town to create, if you will, pop-up safety improvements. Our kickoff demo was here a couple of weeks ago at the interface between City Park and Aggieville. Our consultant engineer drew up plans based on a future improvement project at this intersection. We were out there early on April 23rd to start the project. The engineers from CFS started laying out the curb extensions while we mixed up paint and got started on the piano keys for the crosswalks. And thanks to the traffic shop for loaning us the templates for the crosswalks. We then filled those in with, oh, sorry, temporary traffic paint to find the edges of the bulbous that we were doing, that we then filled in with red paint and further defined with vertical delineators. And so in a few hours' time, we changed this intersection into this. And not for all that very much money. The items in red are items that were purchased and can be used again and again in a demo project's toolkit. And so we had happy pedestrians using it. And we parked ourselves out there for a couple of days, talking to people, getting their feedback, inviting them to experience the marbles at better sight distance when they're trying to cross a street. And the plan is to do a number of these sorts of projects at locations throughout the city during this summer and into early fall. And then looking at the project timeline, we are currently at the phase in the spring talking to groups like The Chamber, Aggieville, downtown Manhattan, here tonight, Rotary Club, let people know what we're doing and to get input on it. So we'll be working with the consultant this summer, creating a project list, putting together the documents for a review period in the fall and adoption at the end of the year. So with that, I'd be happy to take any of your questions.
I have one that's slightly off-topic here, but one of the things I worry about is our bicyclers on high-speed highways. One I notice quite often is Anderson. And I assume they're going out and getting on scenic or going further out Anderson towards Keats or something for a nice ride. So the question is, is the expectation that the, they're sharing the highway or should they be on these nice wide trails that we have built? I mean, are they, should they interfere with the other pedestrians or should they interfere with the, with the cars?
It depends on what your goal is. In some respects, we have a nice trail system, but it's not, it's not complete. I, could you show you a slide that we've had in some of these other demonstrations that shows a street running into a hillside and just stopping dead? We don't build streets that way, but we often build trail and pedestrian systems or bike lanes that way. They'll go a certain distance and then end. So the question then comes, what is going to be the route that a user might want to use to get somewhere? So what is the design solution from that point? If it means going down Anderson, which is probably not likely because of the constraints of the right-of-way and the fact that I don't think we're going to be giving up bike lane or travel lanes on that to, to put in bike lanes, you have to look for a parallel route to get the bikers or walkers there or to get them off of those narrow sidewalks so that people can use them for walking.
We just built that new, nice, white sidewalk on the south side, so what I'm wondering here is our interaction with the people who like to bicycle. And are we telling them that it's a good idea to use these new paths that we've built? And we've built them for the purpose of getting people places, walking or biking. You know, the whole reason, Eddie, maybe you can update me, but I mean, the reason we put those wide paths in there were to get people from up on the hill easily down to leave some of the shopping there on such jobs.
Yes, certainly a lot of pathways that parks and rec build serve dual purposes. One is recreational and the other is that they can be used for transportation, for that everyday sort of use. Where that is the design solution, that's what we, that's where we can go ahead and get that sort of design in place. In places where we can fit bike lanes onto a street, those would be an alternative solution because we can't put trails everywhere.
All right. And I guess my question is, is, is our intent to have the bicyclists use the wider trails for access around town? Or do we want them to ride down Anderson?
If we had facilities on Anderson, I'd say we would want to try and encourage that. But if we have trails that go and make those connections, their intent, since they are, since they are 10 feet wide, is that they can be used for bicyclists. And that they should be using them instead of the streets. And that's why we build the parallel systems.
Thank you.
And I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, but I guess it also kind of depends on their destination, right? Like there's never going to be a trail built down Anderson. So if I'm trying to get to the university or business on Anderson, I'm going to have to ride my bike down Anderson regardless. Which is part of the problem that I find myself in, again, Norview. We built a nice trail that connects me so I don't have to ride down Fort Riley Boulevard, or Tuttle Creek Boulevard, excuse me, which is nice. But it's after that, like if I want to go to work at Civic Plus, I'm still, I'm still going to have to drive down a major, a major artillery and I'm not willing to do that. So don't ever ride my bike. So yeah, I guess it's dependent on destination. So I just wanted to make sure there wasn't something else that you were thinking about too.
One of the, one of the things that I'm trying to sort out here is just what Commissioner McKee brought up, and that is, is there a greater danger from a bicycler interfering with a car in a thoroughfare than there is with a bicycler interfering with a pedestrian on a sidewalk?
Well, there'd probably be a case-by-case scenario to really determine that, but, but I don't know if there's an objective answer, but the thing is, if it's a, if it's creating a dangerous situation for the bicyclists to be on that road with the automobiles, then if you're looking for your design solution, it's either using that road, it's finding an alternative route to get them off the road or encourage them to get off of the road where the automobiles are because the speeds are too great. But most bicyclists who are doing that are going to be your, your type A bicyclists, the ones that are really, really hardcore into biking and have apparently no fear. Myself, I would never do that. I feel fine biking down points if I want to coming to work because the speeds are not that great and the traffic is not that great and there's plenty of refuge. But I would never, ever go down Anderson. So that's kind of off-limits for me. I might be able to lace together a different route, but part of the idea of this plan is what is going to be that route and what can we do to help people get there, make those connections?
Do you have an ordinance against people riding on sidewalks?
In the downtown in Aggieville, but in other parts of the town, I, it's allowed if a, yes.
Why do we do that? Would you rather have them riding the street?
No, generally, I mean, a lot of the history of sidewalks is for children to ride their bikes to school. So we certainly want them on the sidewalk in those residential areas than we do in the street. That's the genesis of most of those policies.
But downtown?
Downtown, we don't want bicycles on the commercial areas because there's more pedestrians. So you have more pedestrians to avoid in those areas, in our, in those commercial areas.
Well, I guess if, if I looked at downtown Washington DC or New York City, I can see the interference, but the numbers of people walking down our sidewalks is not huge. So it's okay. I just, I'm...
It is, it's just the expectation, you know, a pedestrian comes out of a store and isn't expecting to get hit by a bike on a sidewalk.
Yeah, and we've, we've had complaints. I mean, we've done additional signage in both Aggieville and downtown about dismounting off your bike in those districts. So I've had complaints from those executive directors over the years about those two districts.
I'm just trying to find the best safety solution here.
Yeah, I think Jared Tribbley, do you, you always spoke about the reason for driving on the roads as opposed to on the sidewalks. Do you have, there was a reason we were doing all of this where most people felt comfortable or that was the, those were the rules for the road for bicyclists, was my understanding.
It's, at, at a certain point, you're supposed to transition over from the sidewalk to the road. We're working with that through the schools and when is that? But no one's going to do it if they don't feel comfortable. And so we've hired Alta Planning, who is the preeminent design firm in this, to go through exactly what that is. There are standards that when a road meets this criteria, this is the treatment you give and so on, all the way down. It's not one standard thing, no matter where you are. It's a case-by-case. And so we've been working with them with a lot of GIS data, but there are studies that show that it is safer to ride in the street than it is to ride on the sidewalk, cars backing out, cars blocking sidewalks and things like that. Does that answer your question at all?
Yeah, because I remember we had this exact same conversation. I think we almost do it every time. Because, because it's, because we don't ride bikes.
Sure.
That's why. I mean, I'm not a bicyclist. I, I feel very comfortable driving in a car. But I have come across bicyclists and they're very focused and they're driving on the road, sharing the road right along with the automobiles. And they, we irritated one of them once and he said three feet, you know, he kept pointing three feet. So you're supposed to be three feet away. So it's also a matter of education. Our infrastructure right now is not inclusive to both bicyclists as well as automobiles.
Not all of it. I would agree with that. And again, that's part of this, this process we're going through is we're going to hopefully set some standard, very high standards that are adopted elsewhere and have been practiced around the country for key areas. I was almost hit once or twice coming here this evening. Someone didn't see me and I was in the middle of the road. So I'm going to do it anyway, but people such as yourself that maybe give it one shot and they have a close encounter, that's it. You know, it's done. So yeah, the design can do a lot.
I'll just comment, I agree with the, the mayor. I'm, I'm a little bit leery of, you know, the bikes on the road. I'd prefer the sidewalks and, and if we're developing this plan, do what we can to design special bike paths like they did around Annenberg Park, you know, down that far end of Stretch of Anderson, basically from Annenberg Park down there, that I think the emphasis needs to be there to separate the bicyclists from the cars. And then if they have to go on roads, like you say, it should be, you know, alternate routes that are away from like Anderson, Fort Riley Boulevard, places like that. But that's what my leaning is. But the idea that, you know, bikes are going to share the road, it seems pretty clear that if a bicycle hits a pedestrian, there'll be some damage, but when a car hits the bicyclist, it'll be much worse. And so to me, you know, that's the safety issue. I would, I would, I ride on the, I've got a couple of bikes and I ride on the sidewalk.
The state of Kansas considers bikes vehicles, correct? So it's, I mean, it doesn't matter whether we want them on the road or not, legally they have all the same rights as a vehicle does. So my only comment about this is, I'm really excited for plans like this and always approving them. I am, I'm not a bicycle enthusiast, but I agree with Bill Nye that the world's on fire. So I would love to be a lot more environmentally friendly and ride my bike to work more, but I, I have done it once and I felt extremely uncomfortable the entire time. So I now have an Atabus stop at, near my home, so I ride it a lot. But the more that we can do, for the last 50 years, we have completely set up our transportation model based solely off vehicles, 100% off cars. And then we wonder why more people don't ride their bikes. Well, it's because our transportation system is set up to only accommodate vehicles. And when I go to other countries, when I, when I was in Madrid and their transportation system and their, how they move people around was built before cars were even exist, it's amazing how bicyclists and cars coexist together and how many more people are riding their bikes or walking to their destination. So I would just say I encourage this moving forward and I... So I would just say, I encourage this moving forward, and I, I'm glad that we're thinking more critically about how we can move people in a more clean and efficient way, and it's not just all about how can we make sure that this car gets from point A to point B safely.
I think this is a work in progress, and we have to continue, and I'm encouraged about the next 20-year plan and what we can accomplish, and what we've accomplished so far. When you think about this community 20 years ago, there was very little to accommodate bikes, and certainly in my area, the east side of town, there weren't very many sidewalks. So I'm encouraged about the next step, and I'm encouraged that there be more bicyclists and pedestrians. And, and as we kind of taper off the car usage, and as we build more dense neighborhoods, we're going to have, that's a natural next step.
Thank you.
Oh, thanks.
Please.
I was going to say, I think, I don't know, recently I read somewhere that there's the new generation, there's fewer people with driver's licenses. More are either using public transportation or different modes of transportation from one place to the next. And I think the number of bikes at the university has increased dramatically as well. So, and the young people in elementary school are having better bike-riding habits. It's no longer just about wearing your helmet, but it's about how to actually use your hands and use the road and use the sidewalk wisely. So I think this generation that's coming up is going to be more conducive to using bicycles on the road as opposed to on the sidewalk, because they're learning those rules early. I would like to see where this initiative goes forward, and also, funding will always be a critical issue, because there are some sidewalks and some roads that we can just never change. But as long as we look at future developments, we would like to include some of this in that, in that planning as well. So it'll be interesting to see what comes up.
The idea for the project list is also to prioritize it, say, you know, short-term, long-term, medium. But also to identify potential funding sources. It seems like those funding sources are drying up at the federal level, but there are still safe routes from school, to schools grants that could cover some of these, because some of these projects will at least parallel or have the same sort of thing, to get some of the sidewalk materials done in.
In the packet, the language you used was, this is going to replace the old plan.
Yes.
Is replacement the right term, or are we going to modify the old plan, or nothing in the old plan is good anymore? What, what, how do we describe this?
Well, besides the fact that this is also going to include a pedestrian component and not just be a bike plan, I think probably, update could be a word that we use for it. The university has already done, implemented quite a bit of the plan, that their portion of it from 1999, and, or moved beyond it and off of it anyway. So I think a fresh look at it and a reignation of interest is what's called for at this point.
Okay, thanks, John, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Item three is Riley County Police Department update, so call on Director Butler.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Commission. Just wanted to spend a few minutes updating you on some of the things we're working on. Many of you probably have some idea about these matters already. If you have any questions, as I go through my list, please feel free to ask. Many of you know that the city staff has been working with us for some time on some issues over at the parking garage at the Hilton Garden Inn. We have taken some steps that already exist within our authority in terms of enforcement, and we've seen some changes over there. There's still some, some issues that I think need to be addressed, long-term, but short-term. For example, using the 48-hour parking ordinance to notice vehicles that have been parked long-term, we're having some success with that. We've also actually made contact with some of the vehicle owners, spoken to them about the issues there. So I think we're seeing some improvement. I don't know if it'll be permanent or long-term, or if we're going to have to review some different strategies moving forward, but I just wanted to let you know that I think we're making some progress. I was going to mention something about our participation in the flood watch, but the city manager covered that pretty well, so, well, we're part of those discussions, and many of you know the emergency operations center is located at the police department. So if that has to be activated, they'll be meeting there every, every day, once that happens. Next Monday, May 20th, is the monthly law board meeting, and we will be bringing forward our latest iteration of the 2020 budget proposal. That will be our last presentation, unless the law board decides to call a special meeting, but the time would be very short if they wanted to have another meeting after that. I don't anticipate that being needed, but we'll see. On the staffing front, we had five police officers graduate from the Kansas Law Enforcement Training Center on Friday, and we also have another hiring process going on now due to a couple of vacancies that have occurred since they were hired. We also think we're going to be able to hire four new dispatchers. At the time that hiring process started, we had six vacancies. We've since experienced one additional vacancy, so that hiring process will be starting again for dispatch. I wanted to share some data with you, and you're really the last governing body to hear this from me, and some of you may be aware of this generally. I was in the city of Randolph a couple of months ago, and the mayor of Randolph asked me about police coverage, especially in the overnight hours. And there was some concern that there was insufficient coverage up there, and this is something that I anticipated to hear more about from the county residents, but I haven't really heard too much about it until this meeting. So I asked my staff to pull the calls for service data for the entire year of 2018 for the North County, so it doesn't just include Randolph, it also includes the city of Riley, Leonardville, and all of the rural areas. And what I found for 2018, and let me give you some context here, the entire county experienced about 57,000 calls for service in 2018. Now, those are calls requesting service, so it doesn't include any of the self-initiated activity officers might engage in, like traffic stops, or using our data that we identify areas that have special or emerging problems, and they go out on their own and create work on their own without a call coming in. So with that in mind, the whole county making 57,000 calls for service, the North County, we measured, or received 1,869 calls for service between 6:30 in the morning and 2:30 in the morning. And if you average that out, which it doesn't always work out this way, but if you average it out, that comes out to 5.1 calls per day for the North County. And in the overnight hours, and that was really the primary focus of the request from the mayor of Randolph, between 2:30 in the morning and 6:30 in the morning, for the entire year of 2018, we received 87 calls for service, which equates to approximately one call every 4.1 days. So the purpose of me providing that data to them, and then I decided, you know, I'm going to share this with all of the governing bodies, was just to give them some context and perspective in terms of the amount of resources and coverage we currently provide. And from all of the interactions I've had with them and others, when I shared this data, there's, hasn't been any pushback or any debate about how we decide to deploy our, our resources around the county. One thing that I also shared with them, and I qualify this, and I'll do this with you too, is several years ago, before I was appointed, a sergeant was a detail to a federal joint terrorism task force, and his term is ending, and we're replacing him with a patrol officer or a detective, so he's not of rank, he's not a sergeant. So at some point, his position was filled, and so when he comes back, we think we might have one extra sergeant. And my command staff and I discussed, well, what do we do with this position? And so for, for the short term, and temporarily, I've decided if we don't have any other issues emerge that would change this plan, we're going to assign that sergeant to the North County to supervise the four officers that are assigned there now. And I've shared that with the governing bodies in the North County, and they're very pleased to hear that. But again, I told them, something could happen that might change this plan. Currently, it's temporary, and we'll see how it goes. And hopefully, that will also help them in terms of their desire for additional coverage and direct supervision that is there monitoring those officers. Now, they're, they're monitored now, but having one sergeant, like a squad, where they all report to that one sergeant, I think, is more desirable in terms of communication, assignments, and addressing issues as they emerge up there. Any questions about those stats before I move on? Also, Mayor Dodson was kind enough to come out to the police department yesterday. We had a ceremony in the morning for the inaugural flag raising of a POW MIA flag. I noticed when I started coming up here before my appointment that there was no POW MIA flag flying at the police department. Now, it's not a requirement that one fly. In fact, federal legislation requires government buildings only to fly it six times a year, so it's really voluntary. But what struck me was, we have such a strong relationship with Fort Riley, and they are an integral part of this community. And I felt like, at some point, that we would do this, but I, I didn't feel it was appropriate to just send an employee out there one morning and raise the flag for the first time with no explanation or no reason for doing it. And as I was contemplating that, among all the other things I've been thinking about here, I learned that Riley County was designated a POW MIA county, and it was only the second one in the entire country, the first one being in Missouri. Well, that was really the catalyst for me to accelerate this plan, to do this. And so we reached out to Fort Riley and asked them if they would be supportive of this and attend the ceremony, and they did. And we asked the mayor to make a few remarks, and let me tell you, he did a great job. He, he has the history down from every war, from World War I until now, about the history of our men and women who've been, gone missing in battle or have been held captive. So I was very, very appreciative of that. I'm continuing, and I had a meeting today in Topeka, as a matter of fact, with the Topeka Police Chief, continuing to strengthen some existing partnerships and also talking about new initiatives. It's premature to get into any details about what those are, but that's, it's just something that I think is important for us to do. Last weekend, for example, the Wabunsee County Sheriff's Office had a, had a major crime that they needed some assistance with, and we sent some detectives down there to help them with that. So we're doing that as much as we possibly can, and I think it's going very well. Our records management system has been in existence with this police department for about 20 years, and some time ago, again, prior to my appointment, there was an attempt, and the system, I think, is capable of this, of going to paperless reporting that will help us share information easier with the county attorney's office, but also make the submission of reports more streamlined, cut out some redundant data entry, which is my goal. They ran into a problem with the project, they ran into a problem with support from the company, the company was purchased by another organization, and the support really didn't improve. So when I arrived and noticed that, you know, rather progressive agency wasn't doing paperless reporting, I asked a lot of questions, I have a habit of doing that, and, you know, got some answers, and I said, well, we're, we're going to start focusing on this. And, and we contacted the, the company and their support division, and I expressed through my staff what my expectations were. So we have now put together a project and set out a timeline, and we have started training. In fact, the five officers that just graduated on Friday, they're not being trained in pen-to-paper reporting, they're being trained in paperless reporting right out of the box. And so their field training officers are also receiving that training early, so we can start with them. I think it's a good way to do it in terms of, they don't know the old way, so let's try them out on this new system and see how it goes, so they don't have any bad habits to unlearn, and, and it'll be a good measure for us moving forward with the rest of the training, what's working and what's not working. Also, we're collaborating right now, and it hasn't happened yet, with Michelle Jones at USD 383 on a grant application for an additional school resource officer. This position, if it is awarded, it would not be the traditional ones that you see now, although this third position could assist in some of those duties. But there was a grant opportunity, it was very unusual, because usually these require some form of match. This was a two-year grant, and it's 100% funded with no match, which I found very attractive, so I didn't have to come to any of you on the law board and ask for more money to help fund this. But we are designing this, and Michelle Jones really is the one that initiated this. After I told her I was interested, if we could ever add additional SROs, I'd like to do that. She found a grant within a couple of weeks, and it was the grant season, so they were out there. And we are designing this SRO position to be a security planning SRO for the entire school district. So this SRO would work with all of the schools in USD 383, if it's awarded, to help them better design and execute security planning and active shooter responses from the staff and the students. So very excited about that. It's, it's not a unique position in law enforcement to have somebody dedicated to this, but it is relatively new and uncommon, and so we're hoping that this is awarded and that we can do that work here for the next two years. We'll see what happens after that. So I'll keep you posted on whether or not the application is awarded. It has to be submitted by the end of the month, and typically, this, this grant or these grants, when they come out at this time, are awarded around the end of September, early October, so that's when we'll, we'll know something. Typically, they tell you after the grant period starts that it's awarded, so then you have to, you've got to be ready to go. And the last item on my list was, we expected the Three Bay Garage Edition to be finished at the end of April. You've probably noticed it's been raining a lot, we've had some other issues, so it's somewhat delayed, but we're getting really close to having that completed. And that's going to help us a lot with some of our specialized equipment, having it stored properly. We're also expanding our evidence storage a little bit to accommodate some needs there. So with that, I will stand for any questions you might have about what I mentioned or anything else.
Could you comment on this building relationship back with KFU Police Department?
You know, Chief Grice and I have known each other for quite a while, and, you know, when I was appointed to the position, you know, he and I met relatively quickly after I arrived, and I think things are going very well. I think there's always, with departments that have some pretty different missions, there's always bridges to build and gaps to fill, and I think we're working on that. And I think one of the bigger ones right now, and this is not a complaint at all, is the, the whole communications and dispatch function, where there's some discussions going on about how that should, should look long-term. You know, I'm open to all kinds of possibilities and suggestions, at least hearing what they might be. I don't make the final decisions on these things. The, the possible partners also have to be on board with what we want to do, but our staffs are also meeting once a month for lunch, and so we've been doing that for about three months now, so we can spend more time together in a casual atmosphere instead of, you know, when something is not going well, or it's a crisis. So it's, it's a priority of mine, and I think it's going well.
Give you a chance to advertise for our dispatch, our dispatchers as well. I know we're still trying to get that up to speed.
Yeah, one of the things that we're doing there, and it's something I've, I'm doing with all of our vacancies, is whenever we have an initial round of testing for any classification of position, whether it's sworn position, correctional officer, or in this case, dispatch, I, I personally go to that initial testing. I introduce myself, I tell them about the department, why I think working with us would be a great opportunity for them. And I tell them, if it doesn't work out for you this time, please keep us in mind, or refer other people that you think might be a good fit for us. And so there's, there's a lot of things that we're going to be putting together in a more formal recruiting plan, but these are things that I've done for many years, and I've received feedback that it's very effective in the minds of potential applicants when the chief of police or the director, in this case, comes and welcomes them to the department and tells them about the department, a little bit about myself and my expectations for our agency and the kind of services that we provide. One of my most common statements to the uniformed officers, whether it's correctional or sworn, is, you know, there's a lot of perceptions out there about law enforcement in general, and how it's not as attractive as it once was, and that it's a lot harder than it used to be, and there's some reasons- And there's some reasons why those perceptions exist, but I tell them, "Every day you wear that uniform is a day you have an opportunity to make a difference in someone's life." And I believe that to my core, and I think if we hire the right people and train them the right way, then that's what will happen. I tell them about data that I've collected and research that I've read, polling that I've read, and it's really a myth that the community does not support their local police department. That is an overblown perception created by others with agendas, in my opinion. Doesn't mean policing is perfect, doesn't mean we're perfect, but in terms of the general population not being supportive of law enforcement, it's just not true, based on everything I've read and surveys I've reviewed.
I went to a meeting, substituted for USHA, at a mental health task force meeting where they were discussing the CIT, and I know that you're working, at least Captain Fink is, would be leading that effort, I think. And I just wondered how you're moving along in the planning, and if that's gonna be an increased cost, or is it something that you can do kind of organically to support that effort?
No, if there are any costs associated, it'll be minimal. I don't think it'll be impacting any future budget requests, but you mentioned CIT. For those viewing, CIT stands for Crisis Intervention Team. And what this really is designed to do, and we started one when I was in Ottawa, it was the eighth one in the state of Kansas when we started it, it's really designed to be a multidisciplinary approach to dealing with mental health in our community. And law enforcement, like many social issues, oftentimes, those issues land in our lap and our officers aren't adequately trained to deal with it. So, it does involve trying to get as many officers as possible to a 40-hour certification class, not for them to diagnose mental illness, but to recognize signs of mental illness more quickly and give them the tools to deal with it more effectively, so they don't unknowingly or unnecessarily escalate the situation to the point where we're forced to arrest somebody or we're forced to use force. Those are things we want to avoid. We don't want people who are mentally ill to be in jail. We don't want people who are mentally ill to be arrested. So, we provide them the training to do a better job to try to avoid that. But the CIT group includes, would include, members from Pawnee Mental Health, for example, from the county attorney's office, from fire and EMS possibly, because they deal with folks in their homes who may be exhibiting signs of mental illness, and if they're better trained in that, then they can let us know, and then they can take other steps as well, so patients are more cooperative with them. So, it's really a holistic, comprehensive approach to try to get people the help they need without them being in the back of a police car with handcuffs on. So, I'm excited about it. It's something that I believe is going to happen here. I think we have all the right people at the table who are interested in seeing this succeed.
Thank you.
Just have a couple of things. First, you already talked about it, the flag raising ceremony, I thought was really great. Actually, I had someone reach out to me, and they had watched out on your Facebook Live event, and they just commented on what a good event it was, and I'm glad you had the mayor come and speak. I've been in a few of his talks, and they're always very interesting. I, when I had a, funny, when I had to speak at the Peace Memorial event, and when the mayor and Commissioner Butler couldn't, I definitely fell off by league after hearing both of their, some of their lectures on the topic. So, I'm glad that you put that event together, and it was a big success, and so, I just wanna let you know that.
Thank you.
Another thing that I wanted to ask you about is, first, I so appreciate your social media presence. I see, in terms of government entities, people sharing and interacting with your guys' Facebook posts in particular, probably more than I see anybody else's, and I think it's a huge advantage you have. One just curious topic I had is when you're looking for a suspect and you post the picture, let's say they're potential shoplifting, you post the picture of the person that you're interested in speaking to. Once you've identified that person, do you pull those pictures off, or do they stay on your social media in perpetuity, whether that person was guilty or not? Or do you have policies regarding that at all?
Well, a couple of things. I will have to double-check and find out, once we've identified somebody, whether or not that post is deleted or removed, but I wanna make sure that, and this is not an admonition at all, when we are investigating a crime and we put up a photo or a video and we're asking for help in identifying, we typically don't say that it's the suspect.
For sure, yeah, yeah, absolutely.
And we do that for a very strict reason.
But as a layperson...
Yeah, you're right.
I'm gonna interpret it that way.
And that's a common, that's a common interpretation, but we intentionally don't do that in many cases. About the only time you will see us do that is if we do know who the person is and we are trying to find them, and we will name them and put their photo up or a video and ask for help in locating them. But there have been some videos or some photos, I think, put up since I've been here or posted where they weren't a suspect. We consider them a witness who can help us in a case. I think the one you're referring to, I saw some feedback about that on the feed, about why this was being done two months after the fact, and, you know, I'd love to give information and answer that, but we really, and you can make some assumptions, you're correct about that, but I will find out when we identify people, I will get back to the entire commission and let you know if it's pulled.
Yeah, I definitely don't disagree with the strategy whatsoever, especially with the level of engagement that you have. It's just kind of a social media era. Before, you might post that picture on the news, it might flash across the news, and that's kind of maybe the one time that people see it. But maybe that person is just a witness and later goes and tries to apply for a job, and the job does some internet searches on them and somehow finds out maybe they were related to this or not. So, it's just, it just maybe something that we should think about. I don't know the right answer to it or not, but I was just curious, your thoughts on it.
It's a good question, and I'll get you an answer, and I appreciate your observations about the effectiveness of using this. Again, since I've been here, we have identified people in very serious crimes from posts that we've made. Sometimes the photos weren't that good. One time, it was video from an officer's body camera, and he wasn't focusing on this person, it was just after the fact, after a description was given. We went back and looked at our body camera video, and we thought that person was depicted, and we posted it, and it helped us identify him.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
Yes, thank you. I think the relationship building is key, so I think you're on your way there. Also, the role component, that's what we heard a lot of when we were selecting our new director, that was the missing piece for some of them. So, hopefully, those fires have subsided, and it's an ongoing relationship-building matter, community-wise. One of the things about the budget, we are gonna start talking about our budget discussion, and you said you're gonna be having probably your last one on Monday, so I wanted to know where you are on that, and what do you see as an increase? So, we, some, that's the first budget that usually guides the rest of us. And also with the SROs, you said there's a grant now, which is gonna fund a full SRO, but there's already three SROs, and I don't know if the three, I think there's three SROs, at least last year when we looked at it. I don't know if they work with the USD 383 or if they're spread into other school districts. Do you know? The reason I bring that up is because RCPD funds the three SROs. There wasn't a partnership where USD 383 was taking any percentage of it. So, I wanted to know where we are on that, and if, I could be wrong with the three SROs, but if you can give me some information about that, that'd be great.
The, I know we have one at the high school and middle school here, and we might, I'm pretty sure we have one up at the Riley High School as well. In terms of the shared funding, I know that was an issue that you had raised with me. I haven't had any new discussions with any of those school districts about shared funding. It's a conversation that I would like to have, of course, it really depends on whether or not they're willing to have the discussion and talk about sharing some of those costs. I've worked in two police departments that it worked both ways. One, we funded all the positions, one, it was a shared funding formula. So, it can work, and an MOU is what guides those formulas and the payments and remittances from the school to pay their share. So, it's not, it's not something I've dismissed, it, just with everything else that I've been focused on, it hasn't risen to the top of the priority list at this point. In terms of the budget, when we had initially released our, or made our first budget presentation, we were trying to correct some underfunding that historically had occurred in many other accounts outside of personnel. I'm not sure when it started, but I think there was a shared philosophy between the Police Department and the Law Board that these accounts where more money was being expended was not being funded, and the expectation was that it would come out of the personnel line at some point during the year, maybe more than once. I'm not a budget expert. In my opinion, that's not the way to craft a budget or to operate a budget, so we are trying to get those underfunded accounts properly funded, and with the goal of fully funding our vacant positions, which has not always happened, and sometimes intentionally for the reasons I just stated. So, the original underfunding amount that we identified was about $750,000. And our initial budget request for 2020 was $830,000. We have since made some reductions at the request of the mayor and the Law Board, he's the Law Board Chair, and so, with our, we just identified our cash carryover from last year. It takes about three, three-plus months to identify that exact amount, and that came in at about nine, a little over $91,000. So, our revised budget presentation on Monday will be for just under $600,000, and it's about 2.8% of an increase over this year's budget.
I'm sure those conversations are gonna be, hopefully, it will be robust conversation, so we can see where, because that often, like I said, guides what we do at the city level and the county level. And the reason I bring up the SROs, even though it's a small issue, it's still a personnel issue, and the city picks up that tab, and the county school district, so even though they don't live here, if it's Riley County School District, I think it should be a shared responsibility. Even if it's just $1,000 or $2,000, there has to be a certain percentage, because all of those pennies add up for us when we look at the big picture. And with the school expansions that where they're going, there might be more SROs in the future, especially when we talk about security, because not all of us, it's, we're in that era right now where the unexpected is the expected, and it might require more SROs. So, as we look into more of that, I want us to make sure that those conversations at some point happen with the superintendent and the school board, so that we don't just take it for granted that we are automatically gonna fund it if that grant should not come through, what happens in the future, and with the current situation. So, just something to think about.
I will initiate those discussions.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
The other Dennis, one of the many Denises we're gonna... So, item number four is speed cameras in school zones.
Yes, good evening, Mayor Dodson, Mayor Pro Tim Reddy, and Commissioners. Tonight, I'm gonna talk to you about what you asked the city manager to bring forward from the March Dinner Meeting about providing some more information about the concept of speed camera enforcement in the city of Manhattan. And so, some of the discussion issues we wanna run through tonight is, one, some illegal issues, and so, this will be a joint presentation where we'll ask City Attorney Kitty Jackson to add some color to some of the discussion tonight, as well if Director Butler wants to join in some of the conversation. I know he's at the ready and available tonight as well. So, we'll go through some of the legal issues tonight about what does this mean going down this path to consider photo enforcement without state authorizing legislation, but also talk about where would we do this, where's some of the need, some of the initial conversations been around school zones. I'm also talking about how can a program be structured? Would that be with the contractor? What are some of those costs involved in such a program? And then, of course, knowing that we have the Law Board that oversees the police function in our community, what would the Law Board role be versus the city Manhattan role? And so, as we get into this, I wanna make sure we level set a little bit. For those who may watch this at a later date, we're talking about photo enforcement, some people call it speed cameras, but also what we're talking about today is traffic flow, not red light intersection. So, what the concept that we've done some research on is not stopping or using cameras for people who are running red lights or getting into intersections after light changes. The topic that you asked us to really bring forward is more about the traffic flow, school zones, and how speed limits are being enforced for traffic flow. Some of the elements, though, are the same between the red light, the intersection, and the photo enforcement, meaning there is either mobile or fixed cameras. And in all these scenarios, we're talking about capturing an image of the license plate. So, we're talking about the person who's a registered owner is a liable person versus a driver who may have committed an offense for speeding. Also, usually, most of the programs that we see across the country have some type of citation by mail, once an image is captured of the offense. There's usually a civil municipal offense associated versus a criminal offense, and then usually there's some type of fine to address the situation. What we'll talk about a little bit later on is, given the state statute for traffic laws or the ordinance across the state, many of those components are not presently available for cities in Kansas. And so, when we're talking about what does photo enforcement or speed enforcement look like across the country, we've seen some of the programs be discontinued across the country, but about two years ago, the data we showed, there are about 389 communities who do red light intersection enforcement, and about 140 communities across the country that do traffic or speed enforcement. So, it's kind of the volume that we're looking at for how other jurisdictions are doing these types of programs. First, I said the one, the leading topic we wanted to bring up first is the legal issues. Here in the state of Kansas, there is no state enabling legislation prescribing how a program can or should be run, but on the flip side, there's also no prohibiting legislation. So, basically, right now, the legislature, the law is silent from the state statutes. And so, back in the early 2000s, the League of Kansas Municipalities did lobby for legislation for the state legislature, but no legislation was enacted at that time. And so, right now, there are currently no Kansas cities utilizing photo enforcement in their jurisdictions. There have been other attempts and thoughts, Olatha being one, they were prepared to implement, but not having the authority, they're actually interested in Attorney General opinion, but actually pulled back from that as well, because there was some concern that this would get into a larger conversation about how we and other jurisdictions use cameras for traffic flow as part of our intelligent traffic control system. Just the general concept of using cameras for traffic flow and congestion could have opened a larger conversation, and so, they didn't wanna go down that path with the Attorney General. Since we don't have any examples here in Kansas really to provide for you to give you some more context, we did look in the surrounding area, and so, there were six Iowa and 23 Missouri cities that have utilized photo enforcement without state legislation in their states of Iowa and Missouri. What has happened since then is that two of the Iowa cities remain in legal battles, and this is about five years later. So, both Missouri and Iowa, around 2015, were really implementing and experimenting with this, and now, out of the 23 Missouri cities, there's only one Missouri city that still utilizes photo enforcement.
One quick question, Dennis. How, what year was the Olatha?
That was 2015, was it? Well, roughly, I think, 2014, 15, when we first did our legal research, the first time that the city started this conversation, I believe it was around 2015.
Okay, thank you.
But we can double-check that to get to the exact, but that was some of the initial information from 2015. So, what we're saying to you today is that since there is no state legislation enabling or prohibiting, we would be a test case as we go down this path, so we'll make sure you knew that. Also, talking about the need enforcement, when we say we wanna use photo enforcement as a tool or a police device or enforcement device, we have to first understand what is RCPD doing right now for traffic flow, traffic laws in our community. As of now, the RCPD really uses what, a routine patrol or a complaint response system for speed issues in our community, or what's also called saturation, where they've heard or seen complaints of speeding on one certain roadway, they will concentrate officers stationed at a certain location over a period of days or time to really make the presence known that that area is being enforced. So, that is usually the deterrent that has been implemented by RCPD to address the speeding or frequency of speeding violations throughout our community. There is not a full amount of data on school zones about what is the number of tickets, how many violators have gone through speed zones without being ticketed, but it's trying to get a feel for what is the need or what is the problem that we're trying to address. What we said in the first part is that when you have complaints about people... What we said in the first part is that when you have complaints about people who maybe live along a certain thoroughfare or live near a certain school district, they will call in and say, I've noticed a high number of speeders in this area to RCPD, and they will usually dispatch an officer over some point in time to help understand what that situation is and enhance enforcement. But we really don't have any speed count data at this present time for the existing school zones in Manhattan. One of the ways to do that, though, is as we have on the graph there, is there is the opportunity to use some type of speed boards to really kind of get a sense where you can have some traffic or camera count for those. One, roadways, we do traffic counts frequently on roadways, but actually to catch how many people are exceeding the speed limit, there is some ways that we can determine that going forward, not just by citations issued in a certain area. Then it comes down to cost. So if you want to go down this path, there are a couple of different ways or a couple of different factors to consider. If you want to do a photo enforcement type of program, you need to do a fixed camera where you put it at an intersection of a thoroughfare as we kind of have there on the picture on your left, the smaller one. There's also mobile traffic cameras where the camera can capture again the license tag. I will tell you that picture in the middle, that yellow one, that's roughly an $18,000 mobile trailer that can be moved around. The fixed cameras, the costs vary depending upon the fiber, electric in the area, and how you want to use, what type of camera, the high-quality camera you want to use. And then on the third one there, where you have a camera system in place that has a posted speed limit, and it shows the speed limit that the drivers currently going to maybe give them a chance to make sure they're adhering to the speed limit before they get to a certain area or location. And so as you think about what would a program look like, we also have certainly what is currently being deployed from RCPD is the radar guns in the patrol cars or the policemen where they're capturing, but they'd have to be positioned such that they can capture a photo image of the license plate. So thinking about how that's structured would certainly be something we have to look to RCPD to understand how they would deploy in-unit manned types of cameras. And as we say with all, and as the police director has reiterated, as we think about enforcement issues and techniques, revenue is not the consideration. Enforcement techniques are always set up generally for safety issues or to control some type of behavior. And so when you think about setting up an enforcement system, you know that there are some costs associated with the system, but there is no revenue guarantee as you go forward for the program. Then as we look, as I said earlier, about what are the topics we want to make sure you're considering is what is the law board role versus the city role? And again, we can talk a little bit more about, there is no present state enabling legislation, and since Manhattan's a unique community without a police department or a police jurisdiction under the city commission, what we're generally talking about is something that would need a third-party contract for RCPD. It wouldn't legally make sense for the city to be in a contract for something they cannot enforce, since enforcement falls to RCPD. And so when you think about that, Director Butler is certainly open to exploring this program, but I'm sure he also would like to talk about what type of resources would come with the program, because it'd generally be RCPD that'd have to do any contracting with a third-party vendor, should you want to go down this route. And so we can elaborate that a little bit more. So as we're going forward, as we look to the landscape across the country, and really particularly to what Manhattan's situation can be going forward, is really the most straightforward thought to approach this is go back to the legislature and see, is there legislative enabling legislation that they'd be willing to consider? So if we wanted to add a speed camera legislation to our 2020 legislative session, that certainly would be an option that could make things smooth and cleaner to see if we can get the state legislature to go down this path to support cities who want to do this type of photo enforcement. Also, we think it's important to make sure we know that there's a problem that you want to have solved. Is school zone speeding a true issue? Is that we hear, maybe some neighborhoods see it in one area, another area, we just don't have the data, and the fact that school's going to be out here in nine days or so, to gather that data right now could be a little problematic, so maybe talk about the fall generating some data or school zone speeding information to make sure if that's what you want to do with school zone, that's one idea. If you just want to tackle thoroughfare speeding, whether Totole Creek Boulevard, well, it's a state highway, but even Anderson or anywhere else, a local road, we can do some traffic count information for that as well. And then so, thirdly, our issue for you to consider is to weigh the legal ramifications and any potential lawsuits that could come about and derail our overall goals, because we don't have the state enabling legislation. And so those are really what we think are the primary issues that you want to consider as you want to guide us to go forward, to either do more studies on this topic, get some more examples, work with RCPD, or however you might want to proceed. But we just want to make sure we brought to you what we think are the major issues for you as a governing body to go forward to further consider this idea. And so before I close for questions, I'll see if the city attorney wanted to add any context to that. Otherwise, we'll open it up to some questions that we may be able to address for you as you consider this topic.
With RCPD, maybe the director has some...
Director Butler, did you want to offer? I'll just make a couple of quick comments about some of the issues covered in the PowerPoint. The mobile cameras, you know, when you, there's two versions of this that I'm aware of. One, mobile cameras that are actually installed in a police cruiser with a police officer manning it or staffing it. I think there are some jurisdictions that will actually drive a car out and then leave it unattended, so there's a couple of different ways to do that. This discussion is so preliminary, I don't know if, what this would look like, whether it's fixed cameras or one of those two versions of mobiles, or that trailer that you saw up there. I haven't seen one of those before, but it makes sense that that's a device that can be used for this purpose. Also, I wanted to mention, when we determine speed enforcement, we also rely on accident data, so it's not just citizen reports or officer observation. We use our data pretty heavily, and when we have high accident areas where we think speed's involved, we use that accident data to drive where we go and conduct enforcement. Also, if we're, if we're talking about using that trailer, that was that yellow trailer in the middle of that one slide, or if we use cars that are manned, that's heavy on personnel and logistics. And so when this discussion started, my understanding of the preliminary discussions that these would be fixed-mounted cameras or pole-mounted cameras, and so there really wouldn't be any personnel involved except for verifying the citation once it was received from the vendor. In other words, running the license plate, making sure it matched the make and model of the car, and then we would return it to the vendor, and they would mail it to the registered owner. Also, on the contract issue, it's, it depends on how this thing, if it moves forward, shakes out. I prefer not to let the contract. I prefer, since the city is pushing this initiative, that the city let the contract. Part of the reason for that, too, is because of the legal issues. So if I, if I let the contract and it's funded by the city, if there are, is a legal challenge to this, they're going to be suing us. I don't have a full-time attorney to represent me, so it would drive up our legal costs if we get tied up in litigation like that. So it would be my preference that as a partner with the city in this, that the city would let the contract, and then we would fulfill whatever role we agree upon in moving forward after that's done. So those are just my initial comments, and I'll stay up here if there's any additional questions you have for either of us.
I have a couple of questions, because I just, I want to make sure that I understand right. On the, one of the first slides that you showed, it said citation by mail is not legal under current Kansas law, correct? So we couldn't, so I guess I'm confused, and again, I know we're in preliminary discussions, but I guess I'm confused, if we can't do that, like, how would we enforce this at all?
With legislative change that would enable the state current traffic ordinance to be amended to allow local jurisdictions leeway and how we would administer it, because right now, having a civil municipal offense is not a current traffic penalty. It's a criminal offense for a traffic penalty right now. And so we would have to make sure, if you wanted to go the civil route, that we would have the state enabling legislation that would do that. If you want to stay at the criminal route, that changes the jurisdiction of what court hears that traffic citation issue.
So if it's criminal, we can issue a citation by mail? Or no?
We don't know that we can do that, actually. That's something that we would, whatever kind of arrangement works with a vendor. What Dennis is expressing is that the state of Kansas does not allow us to take a State Traffic Act violation, which speeding is, and make it a lesser offense by ordinance. It has to be the same type of offense that the State Traffic Act creates. So what Dennis is referring to is that other states have enabled their local jurisdictions to create a civil municipal offense, so it's a lesser offense like a parking ticket. Our state has not done that. So that whole scheme is not available to the city of Manhattan. So the next question is, if that scheme is not available and it's a citation, what are the appropriate, appropriate methods of service? In Kansas, that's personal service in most cases, that the citation has to be delivered personally. And that's really more a question for Director Butler, because his, his crew delivers those. And whether or not we could somehow find a solution to that, I don't know. I don't know if Director Butler has any thoughts, and if there'd be a way for us to serve a criminal traffic citation through another method.
At this point, not that I'm aware of, and I think that became part of the discussion when Commissioner Butler first asked me about this, I think I was here a couple of weeks, and just mentioned how this worked in Virginia. They did have legislation in place that permitted this to be conducted. It was, it was red light enforcement at intersections where the citation, once it was validated by statute, could be mailed to the registered owner of the vehicle, and they had two options when they received that citation. They could admit that it was them driving, sign it, and return it with the fine as a civil penalty, so it never went on their traffic record, or they could return it, denying they were driving it, and that was the end of it. I mean, they, amazingly, there was about an 85% remittance rate with the fine. People would admit that they were driving and return it. Maybe they didn't realize that there was no repercussions for denying it, I don't know. But legislation guided it, the legislation sunsetted. I did find out after my initial response to you, they did reenact it, I think in 2007, 2008. So there are cities in Virginia that are operating under this model, but it's the legislation that really guides what you can and can't do. And right now, an officer has to observe it and deliver that citation to the violator. That's my understanding.
Then second question, to kind of expand on this, and again, I know this is super preliminary, but I'm just spitballing here. Does the, I mean, really, the end goal of this is to drive changes in behavior and safety, not necessarily revenue generation? So rather, and tell me in your experience, if you've ever seen something like this and it works, rather than mailing them a citation, could you mail them some kind of like, I don't want to even say warning, but like, we observed you speeding in a school zone, we'll have off, we're going to have officers posted at this, or just something to say that like, you were speeding, don't do that again?
That would be a quite, I mean, the RCPD would have to, to issue that letter, and it's just a public kind of education.
You know, if you have a...
That would be something the RCPD could do if they wanted to do that as a public education.
Listen, if a vendor were contracted in any respect here, they'll probably mail whatever you ask them to mail. So if you wanted to mail a warning, they could certainly do that. In terms of this becoming solely an RCPD project, again, it's so preliminary, I don't know what the logistical and personnel costs would be, and so I hesitate, I think appropriately, to commit and say, oh yeah, we're in, don't know what it's going to look like or what it's going to cost, and unless I receive additional budget authority, we'll just absorb it. I'm just, I'm just not comfortable with that.
I'm not, I guess I'm not asking about logistics yet. I guess I'm asking more, would sending a letter, a warning letter like that, fall under that law to where we couldn't? And then second, do you think that that actually changes behaviors?
A warning letter has no legal importance at all, so they could do that if they wanted.
Is there any examples in your career that you've seen other municipalities or police forces using any kind of mechanism like that rather than a citation?
Yes. It's something that I did in Ottawa, actually.
Do you think it works?
It's, it's hard to say, because the sampling would be so small, but it, it was effective in some cases, and it revolved around a resident who commonly complained about loud radios from passing cars. And we actually had an ordinance that addressed excessive noise from radios from cars. And so it was very difficult to enforce, because the call would come in, the motorists were gone, the officers would arrive, and there was really nothing we could do. And so what I asked them to do is to the extent that they could, to give us the license plate of the offending vehicles. And so I had my staff run the license plates, I had a letter that I drafted, and we would send it to the registered owner. I would say at least 50% of the time, I never heard anything, but when I did hear back, the registered owner would contact us and say, that was my son, that was somebody else, and I'm sorry, and I'll make sure it doesn't happen anymore. There was a period of time where this resident quit contacting us, but again, it was such a small number. I did receive some responses, and I received some positive responses. I don't know if it really addressed the problem or not, but it was an initiative that I took on myself, used my existing staff, but it was very limited in scope.
And I think it's, as parallel, but for code enforcement, we will send out warning letters for tall grass or other things. So there is some history of using warning letters from municipal governments.
And then last question I have, and this was probably more of a Katie one, because I just want to make sure if we were to proceed, I have a semi-understanding of what it would look like. So when you say we might face legal issues from the state, is, I'm thinking, would it be something of sort of like a lawsuit, or the legislature taking up action to clarify and pull our authority?
I think either of those things could occur. The legislature in some other states have prohibited cities from using enforcement cameras. Seven or eight states have done that. So if there's a negative local response, that could initiate that action, or it could do the opposite. It could catch on, and the state could enable more cities to do it. So it's hard to predict what the legislative response would be. I think across the nation, you see a variety of approaches, from prohibitions to enabling legislation. So it kind of depends on your local implementation. From a lawsuit perspective, certainly, these are highly litigated programs. I think that, I guess I would say that the problem that we're facing with this in Kansas is that the state laws have barriers to this implementation, which is why Overland Park, Olatha, and the League went to the legislature and never implemented a program issuing citations. And the barriers are multiple. There's no enabling legislation, so you have to enact it under a home rule authority, which means you have to show that there's a public purpose, a public safety purpose. In order to do that, you can't create a civil municipal offense because of the State Traffic Act says that cities can't do anything that's less strict than the state traffic laws. You also have the issue of service of traffic citations, which under the state law is required to be personally served. If the state would tackle this issue, the state could solve these issues for the cities. It's not, it's not a national legal change that needs to be made. It's state laws that are hindering the progress of this type of program in the state of Kansas. So the state might react politically with a bill that could go one way or the other, I don't know. And then from a lawsuit perspective, yeah, these are fertile ground for attorneys to fight, if citations are issued. There, there has to be a negative consequence. In other words, there have to be citations issued and fines paid for someone to get standing to challenge it. And so I think that's, I mean, and we would be in a more difficult position, because we would be not in a position where we have state law support for it. So it's, it's really the state laws that make it so difficult for us, and not just for us, across Kansas. That's why this doesn't exist in the state of Kansas.
And again, this, sorry, this could be my ignorance, but in the other cities that have done this, particularly Missouri and Iowa, is it the AG's office pursuing these cities, or is it third parties suing the city and it's being litigated in the courts?
It's individuals who paid fines under it, and then there's actually a class action in Iowa, a class action lawsuit, so, and in Missouri, they had to refund the fines. The claims could be varied. I mean, the claims the third party might bring might just be for a refund of the fines. There's constitutional violations, privacy violations. There's just a wide range of, of claims that this, I can't predict how someone would bring it, but, but they're not brought by the state versus the city. They're brought by a third party who says that the city is violating its rights. And I have to say that it, when we started this discussion... And I have to say that it, when we started this discussion a couple of years ago, we started with a discussion of maybe using city of Manhattan infrastructure, city traffic cameras, which that's not what we're currently discussing. There is not a way for the city of Manhattan to enter into a vendor contract without the Riley County Police Department as a party to that contract. We might be able to let the contract, but those contracts require the party to provide a sworn officer to review the violation, and it is not possible to delegate law enforcement authority in the state of Kansas. And the city of Manhattan does not have law enforcement authority to enforce traffic laws on the streets of the city. The Riley County Police Department does. So the best-case scenario is that we'd have a three-party contract, where the city, the RCPD through the law board, and the vendor would have to sign the contract. But the city can't enter into a contract that says, "We'll provide an officer," when we don't have the contractual ability to fulfill that obligation. And it wouldn't be enough to have a separate side agreement where the RCPD agrees to step into that role, because we're not going to assume the liability of the Riley County Police Department if they don't fulfill the obligations of the contract. It's gonna have to be a three-party arrangement. So that's a further complication for Manhattan, is that we don't have a, we don't have a police department as part of our municipal government. If we did, that aspect of it wouldn't be a complication, because it would be the same entity. But that is a challenge for us if we go the vendor route under the current vendor scheme.
That's all I had, thank you.
If I can offer a couple of more comments on the contract part that you just mentioned, I just wanted to make it clear, the way it was presented, it seemed as though that the RCPD would be the sole contractee, and that's what I oppose. I would not, I would be amenable to it being a multi-party contract. I just want to make that clear, if that's the route we go. Second thing is, I really think it's important, it was mentioned in the original presentation, that we collect some data from some school zones this fall and find out what the scope of the problem is and where it exists right now. And the last thing, just for consideration, if you do approach the legislature to try to get legislation enacted, here's some things to keep in mind. Again, what I saw in Virginia, when they passed this legislation, it was to sunset in 10 years, and they only, and this was in the statute, authorized 10 cities to do it. It was really an experiment to see how it went. So at the end of the 10-year period, initially, they let it sunset, but about four years after that, and after I left for Virginia, it was reenacted, and it's reenacted so any city in the state can do it now. So if you approach the legislature, that might be a consideration, is to approach them with a sunset proposal, have a certain number of cities by name that would be agreeable to doing, wouldn't force them to, it would allow them to, permit them to do it, and then, and take that route. Something to consider if you still want to pursue legislation.
Thank you, that's a lot of information. We've been working on this for a few years, ever since Commissioner Butler's been on here, he's been working on this. And I think that the data points are critical and something of this nature. But if we're trying to change behavior and do some preventive measures, why don't we put something like speed bumps or something around those areas? Is that frowned upon?
Your fire department won't like that, I'll just tell you that upfront.
Because I thought, maybe the ones that come up and down, or something, I don't know. I was thinking about something that's, maybe even if somebody can put it in the mornings and take them off in the evening, or right after the school session is over. But I thought that might require less personnel. It would be, it would not be an invasion of privacy of any kind. Photographs wouldn't have to be taken, you don't need postage, you don't need anything. But if we can do something temporary in those mornings and afternoons, when those, when we, for that short period of time, if we could do something. Is that something we can't look into, Rob? Is that just out of the, I mean, is that just, we used, I remember when I was growing up, it seemed like there were speed bumps everywhere, but then there weren't anymore.
So you want to put speed bumps on our collector's streets?
Well, just for the morning and the evening, when those schools, when the school zones are on. The temporary, is there nothing temporary at all that has never been discussed?
Absolutely, there's temporary stuff, but that takes people and time. I have the same challenges as he does in terms of resources.
Yeah. I don't know if there was like a push button where we could push it down, push button and put it back up.
Oh, push button?
That's on TV, maybe that's in a future thing.
Yeah, there's, I mean-
Justin, I don't know what, like, we would need a dataset to see where we are having those issues, because I don't think it's at all school zones, it might be a few. And maybe, you know, speed bumps are even out of the question. Right now, this doesn't seem like something that, within all the priorities that we have, as far as pursuing some type of legislation, that would even take two or three years. It's not gonna happen anytime soon. So that would be in the works for a while, and some of us may, none of us might be here by then. So I wanted to see how to do this in a better way, which is preventing the problem now and in the future.
Yeah, to be fair, I mean, we could have a chronic problem in every school zone, so it could be that bad, but it would really be nice to have the data to confirm it one way or another, and then that way, we can prioritize our approach if, again, the city wishes to pursue this. And we will continue having discussions and working with the city to try to make this plausible or doable, if that's the goal of the city. As long as the resources are identified and we have the proper support, then I'll continue to have these discussions.
Is this something that the League of Kansas Municipalities is interested in pursuing, or is there any word from them?
I spoke to the director a couple of years ago when this first came up, and they had dropped the idea because they didn't really have a city that was pushing them to pursue it. And their last initiative to push this was 2003. That's quite a long time ago, and it's possible that there would be a different level of interest now than they experienced then. So my, there is no current effort to tackle it, but that's not to say that if several cities push for it, that they wouldn't tackle it.
Thank you. I don't think I'm interested in being, Manhattan being on the, what I call the bleeding edge of this. To be the target of lightning that would strike with regard to legal fees, that's not what I want to see. On the other hand, if there's some way we can obtain data to, and I don't know what that is, but I wouldn't, I would support working with the League of Kansas Municipalities. I don't see them ever being on the bleeding edge. So, I mean, they're slow and methodical, so as a consensus builds around the state for something like this, I mean, I am aware of other states and what they're doing. In Michigan, they have, on their interstates, they have license plate readers, and even our turnpike has some technology with regard to the reading of the permits. So there's a place for it, I just don't see a place that we can insert what we're after with the current environment. So if there's another opportunity, but I think if you work and, if the League is willing to pursue it again, you could certainly express interest from Manhattan, if the, those Olathe and Overland Park, and, but I don't, I'm not anxious to be the test case, just for the cause of the expenses.
See, when I originally brought this up, I've been looking at this for a couple of years, and then you mentioned, you know, that no revenue, as in, we're not trying to generate revenue and giving people tickets. But there is really a revenue thing that drove my whole process of looking at this, and it's sort of a big view of the police department. You know, as the city grows, the department grows, and you've only got X amount of resources, as you say, and you've got to sprinkle them out, the county, you've got crimes, things like that. And I thought to myself, okay, can you take the idea of electronic enforcement, of whatever it is in the police department, and reduce your manpower costs? And I know that I see officers sitting in school zones, which is why I focused on those, because I live right there on one, the end of Windsong, and there's almost always a police car there because this muffler kills our plants, you know, so, I know he's there regular. But we changed that, so we're not sending you a bill for those plants, we just moved them. But he always backs up there. And so my thought was, okay, if we could cost-effectively put some camera systems in place and allow you to take that officer and utilize him something more productive than sitting in the school zone, without driving up the cost, because I'm hearing a lot of people say, "Oh, this is gonna cost us money." That was never the intention. The intention was to save money overall in the police department budget. And then go at this slow. Like, I looked at, you know, a lot of what they did in the state of Tennessee, that they had a system where they contracted with a contractor, I think I sent you the information on that, I sent the other Dennis that. And what's interesting there is, you know, I envisioned this going real slow, and this is the first night, I think after two years, we finally defined exactly what the state problem is. And that would have to be solved, because this has to be a civil offense, not a criminal offense. And I envisioned this being very small, like, pick one school, whichever one is the most congested, and put fixed cameras in maybe one or two school zones that surround that school. And then, one mobile camera for the officers to experiment with, and I looked at, I think it was either New Orleans or Pensacola, they put one in a smart car, and they had it painted in police colors, and they moved it around the city. And you could have an officer in there with it to get training, and I could see us, you know, playing with this for, you know, six months or a year, if we got that in there. So it's very, very slow, just to work out all the bugs. And then if it's effective, cost-effective, then perhaps, you know, expanding it. But clearly, you know, collecting data would make sense, but I saw the savings, and I know that people slow down when that officer's sitting in front of the Windsong sign. And when he's not there, they blow through there. But that's because it's 45 miles an hour when you get past Annaberg Park, and it's 30 at Windsong and 20 in the school zone. So that's a real, you know, interesting thing to watch. And that's what got me thinking about it, but clearly, I don't want to go down this route, it's gonna drive up costs. That was not the idea. Don't want to drive up tickets, but overall, it's gotta be beneficial for the police department and utilization of those officers. And then I know that, you know, an officer would have to look at the tickets. The way these vendors work, my understanding is, okay, I blow through the school zone, and they have a video of the car going through and a still picture, and they post it on the internet, they send you the ticket in the mail, and you can hit the link and see yourself driving through at speed, and it's all there, time stamped, and an officer has already viewed it first and signed off on it. And then you have the option of paying the ticket through the mail or going to municipal court. So there would have to be an officer doing that, but I also know from my time on the law board, there's always some officers that are unable to fulfill true duty, because they got like, what we said in the Army, a profile, they're injured or something, and you could rotate people through there, and you could be the traffic officer. I don't think anybody would want to do that permanently, but it would be an interesting one, okay, if I can't, if I'm on a profile for four months because I hurt my knee or whatever, and I can't go out, okay, you could assign a guy to that. And I saw that as, you know, saving the cost there. And it would free up people to be school resource officers, or, you know, we've got to guard the court system. And that was the big picture that I looked at, and I don't envision, I don't want to get any lawsuits. So I think that, you know, clearly, we have to, you know, we have to nail that one issue with state law, is we have to be able to issue it as a city, as a civil offense. And if the League can help us with that, or I don't think it would take two, three years, just put it out there. And of course, Tom Phillips will tell me, "Well, if we do that, maybe some of the legislatures will just ban it altogether." Fine, take that risk. It's gotta go one way or the other. And if the state legislature says, "No, we hate the camera idea, and we ban you from doing it," then it's dead. But if we don't ask, it's not gonna get there, and it's not gonna help us with the ever-increasing cost of running everything. And to me, this is gonna help, big-picture-wise. You know, the police department can get more efficient, because you can put your resources where you need them, and traffic enforcement is something, I know the German police don't do a lot of, they got cameras everywhere in Germany, and they use their officers for something else, and so other countries have done it, they do it in England. And so I think it's the way to go for efficiency, and that was why I brought it up.
I'll go ahead and give my opinion on this real quick, so-
It's my turn.
What?
It's my turn.
Oh, I figured you wanted to close. I just asked questions, and everybody else gave their opinion, so. I still, I still want to give my opinion, so I would like to go after you then.
Well, go ahead.
Okay. Typically, you like to close. So, quickly, my opinion, because I only ask questions, because I didn't know we were gonna give opinions so quick. So I'm definitely sympathetic to this issue, for a couple of reasons. First, when I was at the National League of Cities, I sat in a transportation session where they talked about this topic. Not, the whole session wasn't about this topic, but they talked about it quite extensively and how other cities have seen a lot of success in changing behaviors. So there is some evidence in other places where this has been effective, and I think you had even mentioned before that you have seen it change behaviors in other communities. Second reason, we talk a lot about school zones, but I drive through the Anderson Bluemont Roundabout every single day, and I can't tell you how many times someone will be yielded in the inside lane or on the outside lane, someone will just bust through the yield, yield sign, and it's like, they know the people on the turn are gonna yield for them, so they just go. I'm almost to the point on that intersection that I'm gonna sit out there and start taking pictures of people. So like, I think about how a camera could potentially be effective in that area, too. Obviously, I'm really not interested in getting in a legal battle with the state on this issue, so I would definitely want to pursue potentially working with other cities around the state, maybe through the League, to push this a little bit more, because like I said, the National League of Cities was talking about it. So it'd probably be something that the Kansas League could pick up and have some information on how other cities have used it from the National League. So it's still something I'd like to pursue, but I'd rather not get in a battle with the state, so let's see if we can go the other route and work with them instead.
If I could comment on Commissioner McKee's comment about the effectiveness that I described before, I want you to know, it was just in Alexandria, Virginia, that I was referring to. And when we talk about the revenue piece and the concerns people have about this being a money generator, we had five sites equipped, and these were intersections that were difficult to enforce red light citations just because of the layout of the intersection, there wasn't a good place for the officers to sit. So what they did, and this was not driven by legislation, this was a decision the city made to alleviate the concern, is when they rolled this out, they only used three cameras. They had five intersections that were signed and equipped to hold a camera, but they only used three. And the idea was, they rotated that camera, or those three cameras, among the five intersections. So as a motorist, you didn't know which intersection had the camera that day. And it did affect behavior. We saw accident rates drop significantly at those five hard-to-enforce intersections. So my understanding, and I wasn't intimately involved in the program, it was fairly revenue-neutral. They could have made a lot more money, though, if they put five cameras out, but they only put three out. But they did see violations drop over time, so that revenue they were experiencing in the beginning, that rate, that rate of revenue definitely fell over time, but it became safer as well.
I'd also like to clarify that the Kansas state law limitations are in the context of the most recent iteration we were discussing, which was a vendor contract and a civil offense. Commissioner Butler, you mentioned scenarios where police departments have a vehicle that the police department owns and has a camera that might be monitored by the police department, that those same limitations don't apply in that fact scenario, because that's just an enforcement tool that the RCPD could use, if that's the type of tool you're talking about. Because that's a situation in which they have, they sit out there with a vehicle, and they're monitoring them, and they're gonna deliver those citations. But that's a different fact scenario, has a different analysis than a vendor scenario. I just want to point that out, that unless you're talking about a mobile unit in which it would still be some kind of administrative issued ticket, but-
You know, I'm talking about the vendor. What I mean is, police departments were training, they took this camera, they put it in a, in a smart car, they put an officer out there, and he watched it to see how it worked right, and then later, they just put it out there unattended, like a fixed camera.
Right.
And the vendor still got the information and mailed it, so-
Oh, okay.
It has to, it has to go through that vendor, otherwise, you can't make it logistically work, and it'll cost too much money.
Okay.
I'm just convinced of that.
I just wanted to be clear, without the vendor, that the fact analysis is a little different.
I've got about three questions and some comments, and then some, maybe some recommendations of how we go forward. The first one, maybe just a comment. I'm not sure with this number we're talking about, a vendor is even feasible. I can't imagine a vendor signing up to come in and watch three intersections or three cameras, that's probably not gonna happen. The other one is, what is the, what is the greatest cause of traffic accidents?
My understanding is the greatest cause of traffic accidents involving vehicles, are vehicles traveling at disparate speeds typically, and driver inattention. So you can have lots of speeding vehicles, if they're all going the same speed, it's not as dangerous if you've got somebody that's going faster than everybody else.
Particularly when they're merging or something, yeah. The other one is, what is, what is the current ordinance or enforcement policy? The other one is, what is, what is the current ordinance or enforcement policy on passing a school bus with a flashing light?
Well, the State Traffic Act prohibits passing, are you talking about yellow flashing or the red sign?
It's red sign.
Red sign, yeah, it's a violation of the standard traffic ordinance, there's a specific provision, and I can tell you, we just increased the fines, it's around $300.
I'm asking, this is kind of rhetorical, but I appreciate the answer. So, what about if they just have their yellow lights on?
Well, I actually have talked to the Assistant Director of the Transportation Department, because we had an issue with that, and they said that they do not report and will not cite, if the yellow lights are flashing, that they'll only report it if the red sign is out, and I don't know if the PD, but they told me that they will actually, they have a policy requirement, that if the red sign is extended, then the bus driver is required, if they can get the information, to report it to the RCPD. That's what the school district told me in a separate prosecution case.
So, there's a few things that I'd like to gather, if they're possible, and one of those is for Rob. Do we have, do we have any information, you don't have to answer now, but I'd like to get...
Crash Deter, go ahead.
I was trying to pull the same trick on you, you did on Dennis last week.
Oh.
So, what I'd like to find out is, how the city is wired? In other words, does the wiring system exist, or what would it cost to change that for a certain number, to start with a certain number of school zones?
Okay. To do camera enforcement within school zones?
Yeah.
There's ver, okay.
The other one is, I don't know who gathers this, but I'm interested in the timing of the lights. In other words, what times the light come on, what times the light go off? And Dennis and I talked about this earlier, there's a psychological issue here, and that is, if people drive through school zones and don't see any kids, what are they supposed to do? I mean, the human condition causes them to say, well, there's no danger here, I'm just going through it, because the signaling means nothing.
Mayor, I can, I can answer that one for you. It's set by ordinance, when, the times. Those are set in our, in our ordinances, and we time those lights specifically to the ordinance, per school zone, per the ordinance.
Okay, but do, what, I mean, does this mean this is going to be the case until 2030?
Talk about how you arrange those with the schools.
No, we, we work with, those have changed over time. Typically, what we do is, we always ask the school district, and we coordinate through RCPD in the past, and if there's issues in different schools, we've adjusted those over time.
Generally, what is the, kind of, what's the policy?
So, there's, there's a human factor in flashing lights, just flashing all the time. There are studies out there that have shown...
Let me, I just ask the question about timing.
Okay, I was getting to that. We don't flash them four or 10 hours a day. We typically flash them in the morning, we typically flash them around the noon hour, and then at the end of school.
See, Rob, I know that. I'm asking about the time. Does it start at eight o'clock, which is two hours before school starts, or seven o'clock at night? What, how are we arranging this around the time that students are crossing?
They are typically 30 minutes prior to school start, and at the end of the school day, you know, roughly 30 minutes at the end of the school day.
So, for, let's say the school starts at 7:30, so we start flashing at seven, and then when do we end, in the morning?
They only run for about 30 or 40 minutes, I'd have to pull each individual ordinance.
Yeah, well, what I'd ask you to do is look at that, again, with the idea of making that as narrow as possible, with safety in mind, because my assertion is that it's too wide, and therefore, people don't see kids, and therefore, they don't pay any attention any time. The other one is, what is the rationale for a yellow flashing light rather than a red one?
Yellow is warning, red is stop.
A flashing red says, stop, proceed with caution. A yellow light does not mandate stopping.
Correct.
So, I'm just asking about what's the rationale, you're worried about our kids, what's the rationale for a yellow flashing light versus a red flashing light? I'd ask somebody to look at that. So, in data gathering, I'm fine with, let's gather some data in the fall, but what I wouldn't want to do is put that traffic sign up there that says you're now going 37 miles an hour.
No, that wouldn't be...
Because it'll change behaviors.
Right.
We're trying to capture behavior that's isolated from any kind of observation of a policeman. Then, is it feasible to have a video link? And here, this gets back to Commissioner Butler, if you, almost everybody can see a policeman sitting back in a niche, I mean, he's not fooling anybody. So, is it feasible to link a camera, and I'm sure it is, I'm just asking a silly question, with a policeman and an automobile that is not located right at that site? In other words, he's watching his video, and he's seeing people go through there at X amount of speed, it's the same thing you do with radar, only it's video.
You mean to then issue a citation based on that?
Yes, right.
I don't know, I don't know if that would be a lawful way...
I'd like to find that out, because I'm getting back to Commissioner Butler's point about reducing the number of police officers that have to be physically present and parked at a, at a site. I just think in 2019, it's completely technologically feasible.
It probably is, I don't disagree with that, it's just the, the legal aspect of, can you issue a citation using a system like that?
Yes.
That's, that's my question. I think that's what you're asking.
Right. Okay, and I think that's everything I had written down here, so.
I just want to add one thing, oh, Rob, I don't know if you were going to answer. One of the things that, the reason I under, the time, when it's, when there isn't anybody walking, there's a lot of students where their parents go off to work, and they come in earlier in several schools, so it's very sparse, but that light still needs to be there, because sometimes it is dark in the mornings, and so it is spread out between a 30, 40 minute interval. And in some areas, they do have the crossing guards, which have been helpful, and I don't know if they're voluntary or if they're paid, but they're very effective also. And we're not looking to penalize people or punish people, we're looking, trying to change behavior and slow them down. So, that's something else that maybe school districts can work together with their communities and get some of those traffic monitoring people that come out and walk in. At Ogden, for example, we have one every morning, every evening, when those kids go, and traffic stops for them. So, that's another mechanism that's very, less intrusive, doesn't invade privacy, and nobody's getting cited, and it changes behavior. So, those are some other options we can look at, when we look at maybe even retired folks that would be interested, or students that might be interested in such things, so just other options.
There's a crossing guard at Lee School, and that person seems to make a difference, because people see them, and then they don't accelerate till they get 20 feet past them.
They're slow.
I do think, though, to take a slightly different position, I do think that behavioral change sometimes comes about by whacking someone on the head.
We, we do have persons who have done something, that's one of them. There are some that want to whack people, but that's not the case.
I just think, when it's the safety of our kids, and people aren't paying attention, there's something fundamentally wrong with their thought process. What are you searching for, Rob?
So, I wanted to get to your question about...
You really don't have to provide this now, I mean, this is...
Well, I, you know, I was correct.
What?
It's 30 minutes prior to school start, I don't know where, what the heck just happened here?
And it's different, you know, as Commissioner Reddy says, in the wintertime, morning is dark.
What the heck just happened?
And if we looked at, Commissioner Butler and I, and I think Usha, you've noticed this too, because you live out in that area, but you look at the hock lights that are across Sharonburg intersection on Anderson, and then across Kimball, above Sealy Crossing, you know, the yellow lights come on, and then the red flashing light comes on, or, excuse me, and then the red comes on, and then the red flashing light comes on.
There we go, thank you.
So, that means, take heed, something's about to happen, red light comes on, stop, flashing red, take notice, proceed with caution. So, it seems completely logical for one person crossing the street.
Yeah, so, let's use Amanda, Amanda Arnold Elementary as an example. Time of operation, there's, there's basically two times that the lights are flashing, between eight and nine, and then 3:30 and 4:30. And like I said, we've coordinated with the school district. So, in your question, you think an hour is too long?
I don't know, I'm just asking you to look at it. Go down to the school that is served on Anderson, and what's the next one up there, when?
Lee?
The, well, it's by Windsong, it's the next one up from Windsong.
No, no, no.
You can't find it?
Rob, that's under Amanda Arnold Elementary, if you just go up there, it's subsection C is what he's talking about, right there, on Andrew, that's the zone.
Yeah, so, 7:45 to 9:00 a.m., and then 3:30 to 4:30.
So, an hour and 15 in the morning?
Yep, that one's an hour and 15 in the morning, and then an hour in the evening. And again, I'm asking, is, it sounds like an hour is too long, is what I'm hearing, or...
Well, what the question is, is an hour and 15 minutes longer than a safe period around the time that children are crossing?
That's a conversation with the school district.
Well, I mean, that's, those are the kinds of things we have to talk about in order to, because I, the objective for me is trying to make this thing as tight as possible, still allowing safety. If it's an hour and 15, fine, but my point is that if people don't see kids crossing the street, they begin to become a nerd to that, and they just drive through there and say, well, there's no kids, we're just, I can do anything I want.
Yeah.
And I, I can just tell you, and I've told Director Butler this, I come in through that intersection probably three, at least three times a day, and the number of people that pass me, either there or at Lee School, is probably 50%. And I'm, I'm probably going 22 miles an hour, because it takes a lot to hold 20. The other issue here is, when a policeman makes a traffic stop, we went through this with our ad hoc group last year, when a policeman makes a traffic stop, he has some discretion about how many miles an hour over the speed limit he sets. So, if the traffic limit is 55 miles an hour, when is he supposed to give you a ticket? They're doing a traffic, maybe you're done now, but we're doing it out by the airport. So, if you're, if you're on the side road, or if you're on I-70, what's the, what's the limit?
I don't know, I'm not an officer.
So, when, when you're going 20 miles an hour, what's, when do you give the ticket?
I don't know, I'm not a sworn officer.
It's, it's not set by policy, Mr. Mayor, officers are given discretion, and typically in a school zone, there's a lot less discretion on speeding. If it's five or more over, a lot of those folks will get tickets when stopped. When you're out in a 30-mile zone, usually five to 10, but again, it depends on the traffic conditions, pedestrians present, volume, weather, I mean, there's a lot of factors that go into discretion, and whether or not a ticket should be issued.
Well, the reason I ask that is, if we ever went to this system where an officer is remote from the camera, and the camera's monitoring the speed or something, or even if he's monitoring that kind of device that's alongside of the road, that doesn't necessarily tell the driver how fast he's going, but tells the policeman how fast he's going, we'd want to have that be reasonable for a school zone, and it wouldn't be 35.
No.
So, we just, we have to figure that out.
Okay. Anything else? Beating a dead horse. All right, well, thanks, everybody, great discussion, appreciate it, we're adjourned.